So that we may make wise decisions, sound decisions, good decisions in conducting the business of the county. And Father, we lift up our county, our communities, our state and our nation, Lord. We pray for your blessing on all of us. In Jesus' holy name I pray. Amen.
Thank you very much. We will now call the commissioners meeting on this day for a special session under general statute 143, 318.12. The purpose of the meeting is to continue to discuss and consider recommendations regarding the COVID-19 situation and also to begin a discussion and look at the 2021 budget. Your Honor, if you would, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, sir. I think our emergency team has met yesterday, if I'm correct, and you have some recommendations to bring to us. So let's just move right into that. And David, I will allow you to...
Good morning. Well, that's the health director in the ICU to give his situation report first.
Good morning.
Good morning.
As of 11:00 a.m. on April 6th in North Carolina, there were 40,726 tests completed. Of those, 2,870 were positive. There have been 33 deaths in North Carolina, and currently, as of 11:00 a.m., 270 people have been hospitalized with COVID-19. Of those positives for ages 25 to 49, 41 percent. So that has been the greatest of the tests that have come back have been ages 25 to 49. Of those tested, 65 and older, only 21 percent. Now, of course, unfortunately, looking at the deaths by age, 65 and older is 82 percent, with ages 25 to 49 being at 6 percent in the state of North Carolina. In Swain County, again, we do not have any confirmed COVID-19 cases. We have done a total of 68 cases in the county or tests, excuse me, we've completed 68 tests in the county. 51 of those have come back negative, and we are waiting on 17 currently.
Okay. So just to be clear, so everyone knows, Swain County does not have, to date, any positive returns on the tests?
Correct.
Okay. Questions?
How long does it take to get the test back?
Up to a week.
Is that shorter than what it was? We're getting, is it about the same?
About the same.
Mr. Chairman. What are the guidelines for being tested, Allison? Who needs to be tested? What are we, are we setting guidelines?
The state, when this first started, set guidelines of those that had, of course, traveled or had a fever such as that. Then it has changed over time, and now we are recommending if you have the milder symptoms or you think you've been in contact with someone, to stay home and not be tested. Now, of course, if you want to be tested, that is your right, and you can call your physician and have that done. Of course, if you have worsening symptoms, of course, you do need to call your physician or go to 911, or, excuse me, go to the hospital.
Okay. So if someone asked to be tested?
It's up to their physician.
It's up to the...
Physician, if they are tested.
Okay. All right. So there is a protocol in how one approaches that whole thing. So if you feel like you need to be tested, you have to get your doctors, go ahead?
Yes.
Then where do you go? The doctor can do it?
Yes, they can. It can be done at, of course, urgent care through the emergency room and Swain Family Care, as well as the Cherokee Indian Hospital.
Okay. So in this area, we have three places they could be tested?
Yes.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
I have another question, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, go ahead.
How is the phone number working out that we put out there? Is it staying busy? Is it ringing a lot?
Not really. We have the system set up where it would ring to the front, and then if there was any overflow, it'd ring to the back conference room where I have four lines set up. The only day that's been extremely busy was that day that a part-time resident tested positive. So the front office has been able to manage those calls pretty well. We are setting it up now where you dial in and you press like 1, and it will send you directly to the phone bank in the back of the building, where we're planning on having individuals be there to answer those calls in case it's needed.
Last week, I was asked several questions about the hospital's capability and planning, and so I asked Representative Hospital to be here today. Steve Heatherly, CEO, is here. We'll ask him to come next.
Well, thanks for having us here today. I have also with me Lucretia Stargill, who is our on-site administrator here at our Swain Hospital. And so my comments today will be kind of from a system perspective, both Harris and Swain, because there's a continuum of care, you know, throughout our region. So I'll just go down some remarks that I have and then answer your questions. So first of all, thanks for having us here. You know, this is obviously an unprecedented set of circumstances facing our nation and healthcare system remain many unknowns, and the guidelines, as you all have heard, change almost daily with respect to some component of this, and sometimes they change more than once a day. So our team has been working diligently to do our part in mitigating the spread of COVID-19. That's a point of emphasis for us, and I'll comment more specifically on that here in a moment, while at the same time preparing for a surge if that happens. Further, we're focused on creating as safe an environment as possible for all the people who navigate our facilities, including our employees. That began really with us, with visitor restrictions, which remain in effect. So between March 13th and March 18th, we implemented visitor restrictions in all of our facilities, which generally restricts all visitors with the exceptions made for laboring mothers, pediatrics, and issues where there may be a mobility problem with the patient or some communication issues where the patient might need assistance. In addition, we have placed screening stations at all of our entrances, and we screen patients, visitors, and employees as they enter our buildings daily. We're appreciative and understanding to all of our communities for being patient as we've gone through that process, and that continues to this day and will continue until further notice. From a testing perspective, we have the capacity to do a fairly high volume of testing, and we're following the CDC guidelines for testing. As Allison mentioned, really, that goes to ultimately the discretion of the treating physician. So in our world, to do a test, we have to have an order from a treating physician, and we make sure our physicians are educated about the CDC recommendations. Ultimately, if a physician feels that a patient needs to be tested, then they can order that test. And we have testing capabilities at really all of our facilities throughout western North Carolina, including here in Swain County, at Harris, at our medical office building, on the Harris campus, and at our urgent care center in Silva. That said, we have chosen, and I think this will continue to be a choice, not to do mass testing at this point. The CDC guidelines have changed around testing in general, as Allison referenced. And so at this point, we're following those guidelines and relying on individual physicians to make decisions about whether a patient needs to be tested. At this point, you've probably heard some reports about this rapid testing that is coming online. We anticipate the ability to do rapid testing within the next few weeks. It's variable and really dependent on when the material is made available. And so there's kind of a national discussion going on about that. It's likely going to be sent to hotspot areas first, and so we'll see about that. But we keep our finger on the pulse of the availability of that testing pretty much on a daily basis. I would say that our turnaround times are very similar to what Allison described. When we started the process, it was seven to 10 days, with some tests taking as long as two weeks to get the result back. We're seeing that shortened to a degree, so more like seven days, and we've seen some results more recently in about four days on tests that have been administered, say, within the last week to 10 days. But that is still variable, and the companies who are processing those tests are still ramping up their capacity to do so. Let's see, from an operational perspective, beginning in about the second week of March, we started seeing a decrease in patient volumes as patients, individual patients, started canceling appointments. So this was before, about a week or so before, the national guidelines around proactively canceling cases, and I'll get to that in a moment. But I think the good news for our region here in western North Carolina is I think our communities began heeding the advice of folks really before it became a mandate. So we certainly saw that in the form of canceled appointments, canceled surgeries, and that was really initially initiated by patients themselves, as they, if they didn't need something, they started increasingly staying at home. On March 20th, in keeping with public health guidelines, we began postponing all elective surgeries, and then following that on March 23rd outpatient services until further notice. For surgeries, cases are categorized as tier one, that's emergent, tier two is urgent, and tier three, non-emergent, non-urgent. In the case of tier one cases, those proceed. Those are cases that need to be done because the health and safety of the patient is at risk if we don't do the case. Tier two cases, which are the urgent cases, they're evaluated in the context of whether or not postponing is advisable, given the patient's condition, and that really becomes a decision made by their treating physician. And then tier three cases are generally being postponed for 30, at least 30 days, and we'll evaluate that as more is known about how the virus spreads and when we see ourselves on a path to getting back to normal operations. As I said, the judgment of the surgeon is the deciding factor as to how we proceed in a particular case. And all of these efforts are aimed at two things. One, doing our part as best we can to help mitigate the spread of the virus by keeping people out of our facilities and not congregating. As you can imagine, through all of our facilities, we have hundreds of people who come through on a normal day, and they're usually in pretty close proximity to each other. So the goal of this on our part, and it's now been done at, I would say, the vast majority of hospitals across the country, is to keep people at home who don't need to be in a healthcare facility for an emergent or urgent condition. The second factor for us and for all hospitals is to preserve personal protective equipment in the case, in the event that we do see a SERB. So that's really the two things that we're focused on as we have postponed elective cases. So on March 23rd, as I indicated, we began postponing all elective outpatient services. Those are things like imaging lab, physical therapy, et cetera, and we use a similar decision-making process as we did for surgery. Similarly, the judgment of the ordering or treating physician really decides how a particular patient is navigated. From a supply perspective, we monitor supplies on a daily basis and have generally been in a good position. About three or four weeks ago, we increased our PAR levels as we kind of looked out and tried to understand where it could go. And so we have generally maintained a pretty good position as it relates to things like masks. I have a couple of examples here with me, and gowns and those things, gloves and those things that are important. Like every healthcare provider in the country, we have concern about if we see a big surge in cases, you know, preserving our personal protective equipment. But right now, we feel like we're in a pretty good spot. From a contingency planning perspective, we have activated our incident command system and are in contingency planning mode in the event that we do experience a surge of patients needing hospital services. We have the ability to expand our capacity at Harris to roughly two times our normal average daily census. We have the ability to accommodate significantly more patients on ventilators than we normally have at Harris. We have nine ICU beds at Harris, and I would tell you that under normal operations, sometimes ICU beds for us can be a rate-limiting factor because we only have nine. But if we have an influx of patients needing critical care, we have a plan to, you know, kind of expand capacity beyond those nine ICU beds that we have, and in keeping with having more ventilator capacity than our average daily census. We are creating what we call a COVID-19 ward, in which we will keep COVID persons under investigation. In any confirmed cases that don't need ICU care, we'll keep them in a relatively isolated place in our hospital. And this will allow for better isolation practices and likely reduce PPE usage. We have developed a staff surge plan that includes reassignment of staff from low-volume areas, and we have an inventory of those staff and their competencies to guide us and where they would be assigned. We're working through similar planning with respect to our medical staff. At present, so this is particular to Swain County, we are not admitting COVID patients to the Swain Hospital. And the reason for that is, that could change in the event of a SERB. So again, we kind of have a backup plan if we needed to go that direction. But as some of you may be aware, we operate a swing bed unit at Swain, and that's really the most of our average daily census there are swing bed patients, and that's kind of more of a long-term rehab service, people coming off of joint replacement surgery, or maybe they've had an extended acute care stay where they have antibiotic therapy. So in some cases, those are immunocompromised folks, and we wanted to make an effort to keep, you know, COVID patients or people who are suspected of having COVID away from that patient population. And so that's worked out fine so far, and that's kind of part of our planning. So really, what happens here in Swain County, if we have a suspected patient, that patient gets transferred to Harris at present. Again, if we have a big surge, we may have to revisit that operational consideration, but that's the way it works right now. We do have a plan if we experience a surge in our emergency departments or at our urgent care center in Silva. We will go to kind of back up operations here in Swain County. That will be Swain Family Care. And then we've also been in communication with the urgent care center should we need to offload some patients in the event that our emergency room just became overrun. So we would keep the emergent patients there in the emergency room, and then the more urgent patients would either be offloaded to Swain Family Care or to the urgent care center. I talked about PPE, and we really increased our PAR levels. Feel like we're in a good place there, and we have created the ability. One of the important things, and we've already experienced this at Harris, is when you isolate patients, you need to have the ability for them to communicate with their families, and so we've created the ability to do that electronically. I will say also, from an electronic perspective, a lot, most of our physician practices have transitioned to doing electronic visits in lieu of in-person visits, again, to try to keep down traffic and do our part in mitigating the risk of spread. We're working with regional partners, our health departments, emergency management in all of the counties that we serve, as well as Cherokee Indian Hospital, Haywood Regional Medical Center, Mission Hospital, to have a thought about more of a regional surge plan should that become necessary. So I would say that we have been in this mode now for about three weeks. We are experiencing significantly lower volumes, as you can imagine. So the good news for us so far has been that we haven't seen a surge of patients. And so that's, you know, in the hospital business, that's not always what you want, but in this event, that's what you want. You don't want to have a surge of patients. So the good news is that I would say that people do seem to be heeding the social distancing guidance. We're seeing lower volumes in our emergency departments, which I think is a testament to folks doing what they should by and large. But that's a point of emphasis for us to try to educate folks about that and the importance of that so that we can help to flatten the curve. I guess in conclusion, I would say just thanks again for the opportunity to speak. Healthcare workers throughout the country are being recognized for selfless contributions in responding to this unprecedented set of circumstances, and this recognition is well deserved. I'm proud of the work that our employees at Swain and Harris do every single day, and especially now. I would also say that during this unprecedented time, we also want to express gratitude for everyone who's working really hard every day to make our lives as normal and livable as possible. So grocery store workers, convenience store workers, restaurant workers, who on some level are in harm's way as well as we all may be with this virus, and there are many more who are helping us navigate daily uncertainty. So our communities, our state and our nation, will emerge from this crisis as a result of the things that unite us, and I'm grateful for the response that our communities have had so far, and we just need to keep that up. Can I answer any questions?
Yeah, question. How is, you might not, I don't know, you might know this, might not. How's insurance come into play on this line?
Yeah, it's, I would say, variable a little bit. So there have been a number of measures, and I couldn't recite them all, where this stimulus package, for lack of a better word. The government, at the federal level, is ensuring that people with COVID-related, who receive services, whether it be testing, hospitalization, or whatever, that there's a mechanism for them to be covered. And so we haven't really seen that play out a lot in our world because we've had a limited number of cases. But I would say that generally speaking, the insured population, really, this is handled in substantially the same manner as any other condition. And then there are some special considerations for folks who are uninsured, but they find themselves needing to be tested, or they find themselves with an emergency room visit or a hospitalization. And so there's a process that we go through. And my understanding is that, you know, basically, the government has stepped in and said that no one will experience an adverse consequence from a COVID-specific service or diagnosis.
That's what I want to know, because I know a lot of times insurance comes and steps in and kind of halts the process that a physician may see this needs to happen, and the insurance comes behind and says, well, hold on a second, we got to do this nine steps before we get to that. Is that going to be a problem, you think?
Yeah, I don't get a sense that that's going to be a problem. I would say that, you know, the scope of what the country is dealing with is kind of unprecedented. I would say, though, that, well, the commitment is, we're not going to let that be a problem. So the reality is, when our physicians say something needs to happen, and they're using their best medical judgment, we're going to make sure it happens, and we'll figure out the accounting for it later. Yeah.
Thank you. Do they need any questions? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you all.
David, if I may, he had masks, I would never talk about him, so I was wondering if he was going to point out something.
So, you know, masks are in vogue these days, and so these are just a couple of examples. These are the N95 masks that you hear people talk about, and so this type of mask provides the highest level of safety, I guess. And really, we are trying to, as everyone is, preserve these masks for those cases where we have someone who is suspected of having the virus or we have a confirmed case. I will say, that's an important point, so I'm glad you brought that up. People who come into our facilities, because of this lag in testing results, we treat a suspected case the same that we treat a case that we have confirmed, until we know it doesn't exist. So in terms of the isolation, in terms of the personal protective equipment that our staff wears in interacting with those patients, it's kind of the same, whether it's a person under investigation or a confirmed case. But this is kind of a key safety thing for our staff, this N95 mask, who come in direct contact with folks who may have the virus or it's highly suspicious that they do. And then this is just your standard mask. And so, again, we're implementing policies where, for the most part, if any staff member is in a patient care area, they are required to wear one of these, or if they're going to come in to contact with patients who could have the virus. That includes, for example, our registration staff. I was just up at the Swain Hospital, so there were four people at the front desk of the Swain Hospital, and every single one of them had one of these masks on, and that's the standard that we need to follow. So these two things taken together in situations, wearing this over this can extend the life of this mask and make it reusable. So we're in up to five kind of separate exposures. So this, I just wanted to show you, this is kind of, when you hear the news reports about masks, this is what they're talking about, and they're a pretty precious commodity right now. Person, okay?
Sure.
So I can't, I don't have any specialized knowledge. What I would say is that I think the CDC and other authorities have determined that any barrier is going to be helpful in some way. So I think that, I think it's hard to say the extent to which a cloth mask or some face covering helps. Certainly, in a clinical environment, we would want that to be the last resort of what we need to protect our staff with. But in terms of being out and about in society in general, I think the guidance that some barrier of protection is better than no barrier of protection is a reasonable position to take.
Well, I think you're in a little better position since you have talked to physicians as well, so, you know. But I was just wondering, does your colleague want to address anything for the local hospital?
Um, I can, Steve, I'm just really want to reiterate the dedication, the mental dedication of staff. Nothing to end this, everyone's going to be closer, as I was just saying, because everyone is really, really helping out and helping out patients. We still have a very hard census, if the hospital's making a call to patients. hard consensus, if the hospital's making the call patients, all of them, and these type of short-term complications, they're, so, you know, we've got to kind of all hands on that too, because it's the same way that we would.
I have to do this to you, but I know whatever you said was important. The camera can't pick it up, so I'm going to ask you to come up to the mic and just repeat it, please.
Thank you. So what I was saying was, just the appreciation that we have for our staff. At the hospital today, there are 12 patients. All of them are recovering from some type of procedure, so they will be at the hospital for a couple of weeks. So we've got staff up there taking care of them, just like they would on any other day where there's not a global pandemic happening. So we've also really just witnessed the staff pulling together, doing everything that they can to get through this. And we're just really so appreciative and proud of the folks working at the hospital today. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Harris.
I will say, as they leave, early on, Allison and I established a weekly meeting or conference call at the hospital, and we discuss those things, particularly Allison and Lucius and the other staff, on a weekly basis, and make sure we're all on the same page, and everyone's working together. And I appreciate your cooperation very much.
Thank you guys very much.
As we discussed last week in the meeting, we were going to hand out flyers to the general public for information purposes. A lot of people called and checked one. We were stopping cars and handing flyers, but we weren't checking any licenses. That went very well. We probably handed out, I'd say, around 2,000 flyers to the people passing through Swain County. We also have, or had and still having, some folk coming in here that just are not getting the gist of this stay-out, stay-home order. We've asked several of them to leave the county, and we're going to continue doing that as long as this order's in place. Some people that we tell, they got to quarantine themselves 14 days, they voluntarily leave, they don't want to stay in wherever they're at for that period of time. A lot of them have not heard about the order. And when you tell them about it, they say, well, we don't know, we just need to go in and get groceries. And we tell them, no, you can't do that. You're supposed to bring all your supplies, groceries, medication with you. So, again, those, a big group of those people say, well, we'll just go back where we came from. And that's the best solution to that whole situation. Other than that, we've wrote several citations for people that were violation of the stay-at-home order, local people mostly, that were out and about when they shouldn't be, and places they shouldn't have been. So we've been writing citations for that.
Wow, good. Are you, you will continue, of course, I'm sure, Sheriff, of handing out the pamphlets that you have? Will you continue to hand those out?
We will. We probably won't do it as frequent as we did, simply because our call volume is going back up, and we're having to answer more calls now. But we do it when we can.
Okay. Thank you. Questions for the sheriff?
Can you tell me some of the citations that's been breaking the order that you've had to write?
Yeah, where they're just out wandering around in places, times they shouldn't be there, or places they shouldn't be, the stay-at-home order is pretty self-explanatory, stay at home.
Has the calls of, you've had lots of people calling?
I've had lots of people calling me, yes.
Yeah, I know I've had some people call, and I've told them that they had to call you to tell you. So you've had lots of people being eyes and ears for the community?
They are, yeah.
Thank you.
We're having so many calls of that type that Sheriff and I talked yesterday, we may be, rather than dispatching, when someone calls in and says, there's an out-of-state car or a cab that hasn't been there, we may be making a list, and they can spot-check them later, or in some kind of organized effort, rather than have it run from one end of the county to the other. So I think we're going to transition to that.
Just an example of that, we've got a car sitting right now at the Larka Parking Ride from New York, that's been there at least part of the day yesterday, maybe all day, and still there today. So we don't know where that person's at. Could be anywhere. So we're keeping eyes on that car, and we, when that person comes back, if we're there, then we're going to find out what his purposes are in Swain County.
One of the pieces of technology that's out there is a phone tracking system. It's on several internet sites, and I'll get them for you later if you need them. But it shows how far from home, or how far from a position a cell phone moves. And if you look at that, there's a great follow in that graph. So the things we're doing is working. At one point last week, we were third in the state of North Carolina highest, the best of limiting movement. Over the weekend, we were down to about six, but we're consistently up in that area. So Swain County's, what we're doing in Swain County is working. And I'm very pleased with that.
I think you make an excellent point, David, that the stay-at-home order is not to prove that we have the power to do that. The stay-at-home order is for your own protection, to stay healthy, and to stay safe, and keep your family safe. And, you know, bucking the system is not good at this point, simply because you endanger not only yourself and your family, but you endanger other persons as well. So I think we just need to keep saying that, stay home, stay safe, and, you know, take care of you and your family. But I appreciate that. And I'm glad to hear that people are doing that. I think that is, speaks well, speaks highly of Swain County.
It does. The EMS has responded to this. Let me back up. When 911 calls come in with breathing problems or high temperature, the dispatchers ask a series of questions that trigger a COVID response by EMS, which means more protective equipment when they arrive. So up to this point, we've ran six of those calls. We've transported a couple of them to Harris Hospital. A couple of them are here and clear. Most of them have not been suspect. You know, they triggered the questions, but when you drill down, they probably do not have it. As Allison said, we're still waiting for some test results to come back. But so far, so good.
David, on our closed buildings, like the courthouse, are those folks supposed to be asking you a question when you call in to go in and see somebody? Are they supposed to be screening people? I called into the tag office to go in, and they didn't ask, nobody asked any questions, anybody walked through the door. I assumed that we were actually asking some questions before people go into the building?
We have not done that yet.
Oh, okay. I think that's something we need to consider.
As long as there's been a deputy there, we've been kind of relying on him to do some initial screening for us. You know, at some point, when we close the buildings, the deputy may not be there. Is that true?
Right.
Okay. So we may have to look a little more street, questioning on people walking in at that point.
I know in some places, when you call in, you ask those questions from the end before you even consider going in.
Right.
And I know that people can say anything, but still, I just, I wasn't sure if that had been supposed to, it's not being done.
We worked the staff in that building to limit the people in each office to one. We put up barriers, sneeze guard barrier type things in front of all of the tag personnel and the tax office personnel. I'm not sure what we did with mapping, but I think we did work with it as well. Okay, so we've worked to eliminate some of that exposure to all those staff members as well.
Any other questions?
Police chief and the mayor normally sit on our emergency meetings once weekly, so I don't know if they have either one of you upcoming.
I'll address this right off the bat here. The sheriff has proposed the curfew, and I've looked at that resolution. I discussed that with Chief Robinson this morning. We can curb the sheriff's recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
That's the reason I'm here today. So I'll excuse myself, gentlemen.
No, you're welcome to stay, but thank you very much.
I love budget hearings, Mr. Mr., but I will pass on that.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
So with that being said, there, our emergency team did meet yesterday, and we went over several things. One of the recommendations from the emergency team is that we do a curfew, starting Wednesday, the 8th, which is tomorrow, at 10:00 PM. It'll be 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM. And I can read that for the record. So number one, under, now therefore, curfew imposed as of Wednesday, April 8th, 2020, at 10:00 PM, a curfew is hereby imposed within Swain County, North Carolina, for all persons located within Swain County, unless otherwise exempt as set forth herein. Number two, curfew between the hours of 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM. No person may be in a public place, defined as any public, any place today is generally open to and used by the public place or a substantial group of the public, whether it be publicly or privately owned, including but not limited to streets, sidewalks, highways, alleys, right-of-way, public vehicular areas, and parking lots, transportation facilities, theaters, restaurants, breweries, bars, shops, schools and school grounds, places of business, playgrounds, parks, similar areas that are open to the public, and other common areas open to or accessible to the public, or establishment, between the hours of 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM. Exemptions, the following persons are exempt from the curfew restrictions during this period of time that such person is acting and working in his or her official capacity, and or working at or traveling to his or her place of employment, healthcare providers, human services providers, essential infrastructure operations, essential governmental operations, workers, and individuals experiencing homelessness. This is also, this also includes all first responders, emergency management personnel, public health department personnel, law enforcement and corrections personnel, emergency telecommunications personnel, elected officials, judges, court personnel, hazard material responders, child and adult protective welfare personnel, active-duty service members on official orders, and other governmental employees working for or to support COVID-19 essential businesses and operations. Further, the following persons are also exempt from the curfew restrictions. Anyone who is in a public place or establishment for the purpose of obtaining necessary medical evaluation, care, and treatment at a hospital or other medical facility that is open to the public during the time of the curfew, or anyone who has been ordered by a unit of state, local, or federal government to be present at a public place or establishment. And number five, the effective time and duration, this declaration shall be effective as of Wednesday, April 8th, 2020, at 10:00 PM, and shall remain in effect until modified or rescinded by the Board of Commissioners. Number six, the violation, any person violating any restriction or prohibition imposed by this declaration as authorized by the Swain County's Declaration of State of Emergency shall be guilty of a Class II misdemeanor in accordance with General Statute 14-288-20A. I think the rest of it's self-explanatory. That's the gist of it.
Okay. If I may, I'd like to just ask the emergency team, I know what was read, but what was the gist of the discussion, and what were the conclusions that brought this particular curfew to us? Sheriff, you mentioned something a moment ago.
We felt it was very important, as we're reaching the peak time of the virus to spike in North Carolina, that it was important to limit movement as much as possible during that time. It also was sparked by the number of calls that we're seeing an increase in, and they're going up drastically, anywhere from domestic violence. And when I'm talking about domestic violence, I want every person that is involved in a domestic violence issue, if you are the victim, this curfew does not apply to you. We want you to get away from that situation if at all possible. If not, give us a call, and we will assist you to get away from it. We don't, we don't want anybody to be in a dangerous situation. But over the past weekend, we had two assaults on law enforcement officers by individuals that shouldn't be home. I mean, it, very, very violent, one of them was very violent, where they assaulted an officer, they kicked the EMS, the guy kicked the EMS worker, and he's in jail right now, sitting on a, on a pretty hefty bond. Another one was at a Eagle Campground, and we had to go hands-on with another one. So every time we have to do that, it puts these deputies and everybody else at risk of contracting that virus. So if we can keep this curfew in place until we get out of this, and it gives the officers another layer of protection, not having to deal with a lot of nonsense, if I could say that without being abrasive, but a lot of it is nonsense.
Well, I would take that as a positive comment. It is nonsense, so.
How much movement are you seeing ordinarily? Is there a lot of it?
Typically, in the last two or three weeks, and I'll refer to Charlie for this, too. In town, there's not a lot of movement. But the ones that are moving are the ones that need to be home. And there's enough exemptions in this, in this curfew that allows people that are working to get back and forth to work without any, any type of citation. So there's a lot of exemptions in it.
Sure. Is this going to change anything that you're already doing? If you see somebody out, I'm sure past 10 o'clock right now, I'm pretty sure your officers will probably check them out anyways, aren't they?
We do check them out. This gives us, I mean, it just, it's another layer of enforcement for us.
Thanks, Sheriff. I noted two things, the adult protective services and the child protective services and the violence, domestic violence are two things that need to be responded to immediately and not let drift over the weekend or days. So I appreciate that, and thank you, Sheriff. David, would you like to add anything to this?
I guess a big positive I see of having this in place is, one of these areas of our population we're not reaching is the younger folks, those 16 to 22, or 23, or 24. You know, the risk's not very high, based on statistics. And if we can use this to get the message to those folks that they'd stay home, and keep their six feet, and do those kind of things, I think it's a positive thing.
Okay. Allison, from your perspective, anything to add to this?
Mr. Sheriff, Dr.?
Sheriff, sir.
If I could just say again, the penalty for a Class II misdemeanor is up to 60 days in jail, up to a $1,000 fine, probation, community service, plus court costs. And it's on the criminal record for the rest of their life. So the public needs to know that. They need to know the penalty for violating this order.
Good point. Thank you.
I have another question.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
It's for the sheriff. Of everything else that we've already passed, how much, how hard is lots of it to enforce? Are you enforcing, I know you're enforcing as much as you can, but it's hard to enforce still, isn't it? Or has it been pretty easy? Do you have a list? Did you ever get a list of what is essential businesses and what is not essential businesses? So- So I know a while ago you said, like, the citations you wrote for people who should be at home, but even in what we've already passed and stuff, there was big leeway in what they could be doing and what they might get away with doing. I mean, plum up to exercising. They could have said, "We're exercising" or something and, and got out of it, but is it hard to enforce that? And the cabin rentals, I've still had several calls about cabin rentals, campers still being pulled in, or people come here for a month or two out of the year, still being allowed to come in. Is it still hard to enforce everything we've already passed?
The stay-at-home order is, it, it can be difficult. Like you say, they, they can, they can say, "Yeah, we were out exercising," but when they say they're out, well, we're just wandering around, we're just out walking around, or if they're, and some of these citations came from people coming from a drug house. And that, that, that's what sparked all those. It's virtually impossible at this point, I'm hoping it changes today, that, that we can get a thumb drive from the tax office that's going to give us a list of all residents' addresses and names. So if somebody says, "I have a resident here," we can, we can look them up on that thumb drive and tell immediately if, if they're telling us the truth or not.
And even with that, we still rely on them to tell the truth about quarantining. If they are, if they do come in and you go check them out, they can say, "Hey, I've been here 14 days already." So lots of this, we still rely on personal responsibility, even with a curfew, it's going to be hard for you to get to some places in time to check them out. By the time somebody calls and says, "Hey, is somebody out here?" It'll still be based on your patrolling. Are we going to have to add more people to patrol to enforce the curfew, or do we got enough, or?
I'll be glad to take more people if you'll finance them, but, you know, we just got what we've got. We, we can't be everywhere at, every time. And, you know, people are going to, people are going to violate it. There are a certain amount of people that are going to violate it. There has to be some self-responsibility with every individual in Swain County to regulate themselves, or we can't settle in every house, we cannot check every car, we cannot check every camper. We're checking as many as we can, but we're not getting them off.
Thank you. And if I may just may add to that, Sheriff, if teenagers want to gather, because you can't tell them not to do that, so if they're just trying to harass your officers by gathering anyway, the thing that they are forgetting is that they're, they may be in a home that has children, they may be in a home that has compromised immune system adults, so it's not just about them, it's about protecting the rest of the people in the county and in their families. And that's the point that I want to try to get across to people, it's not about you, it's about protecting others and, and those that you say you love. So I'm, if you feel that this is a tool that will help you protect us, then I think it's a good tool, so.
Everything we're doing has a pain factor to it as far as having to sacrifice a little bit. If we will sacrifice just a little, get through this, it, it'll be over with and done, then we can move on back to our normal lives. But as long as people are defying, it, it just prolongs the agony.
And, and as David was talking and also Allison, we haven't had the surge that the state has predicted. Swain County has not had that surge. That doesn't mean it won't happen, but as long as people will self-police, if you will, and, and monitor themselves about how they act and when they get out into public, I think that that's a big, big part of it. And obviously, they're doing it because we've not surged in this time when we should be, so.
Typically, regulations are set in place for those that cannot regulate themselves.
I like that. I like that, Sheriff. That's another one I'll steal from you, so.
Just a question maybe to the team, oh, on the case about the non-essential businesses. Have you made a list of the businesses in Swain, of what's combined and what's not?
We have not. We're pretty much following what the governor's put out and the things that is listed in that. And, you know, that can be interpreted several different ways. So we think that our, our best policy is to follow what the governor said, the governor's regulations that they've put in place, both the stay-at-home order and the, the social distancing and the other things. And those have lists of essential businesses. Sometimes it's just types of businesses, but that's what we've tried to, tried to pass along to the citizens and the business owners in the county. We've not sat down and developed an all-inclusive list.
Once, I've had a big question, what do you consider to perform with the guys? Again, today, when you start looking at it, who considers what's essential and what isn't?
If a business owner has a question that we've, we've been asking the Colville County Manager's Office, and we've been looking at those one at a time and trying to apply it fairly across the board and answer those kind of questions.
Sheriff.
Mr. Chairman, David gave me some numbers this morning that, that came strictly, strictly from dispatch. March 2009, for, for the month, we had 2,287 calls. March 2020, we had 2,798 calls. Our calls went up five, by 500 in one month. And these are anywhere from domestic violence to suicide threats and actual suicides and attempts, and that's a, again, is a reason, one of the reasons for this curfew request.
Okay, thank you.
I'll, I'll run over this curve, you know, if it makes sense. I mean, if you have your guys out, I mean, that's what we're here, if you have, because you, you've already enforced it on this, and we're not going to enforce it. Everything's not going to get caught. I mean, it's like, that's big about their speed right now, just not getting tickets, but you cannot say we don't make that because people are getting by, but you do your best to enforce what we can. And I think there is a lot of gray area. There's a gray area in everything you do. I've been in building spaces for 15 years, and I know there's laws, rules, regulations, but there's, there's gray areas that are across the board. So when you talk to somebody, they may be lying to you, or they may not, and that's up to you to figure out. That's, that's why you have those officers and those businesses to be able to train, not profile, but to figure it out, to make sure it's working. And so I think that's what's happened a lot of times. You know, even on the essential businesses and stuff, I think people ask me about essential business. The governor put out the list, we have a list, but some of them still fall in that area of, "We're Swain County, we don't have a Walmart." So now we need, can I get this from this business? So it's, it's really essential. So I, I've been referring those to David, which he graciously let me do that, if people call me or, or Kevin. But I think there's so much that we don't know, we can't just say, "This is it, we're going by this." It's, it's got, we've got, this thing is developing, and hopefully, if this ever happens again, we'll have a better plan. And we didn't have a plan. And so if you don't have a plan, you have to use what you've got to make a work until you get to a place where you say, "Oh, well, it's working better or greater than still then, you got to improve on it." So I like, I think this is a, this makes Sheriff Kaufman's job easier, just that he's safer and I'm, I'm concerned for whatever, if we got to go get this thing eradicated and keep it out of our county.
And just your point about.
I'm sorry. I was just going to say, and the Bryson City Police Department as well, because people are heading in this direction, they're coming to Bryson City, so.
Just, just to your point about verifying if somebody's telling us the truth or not, we try to limit the exposure our officers have got talking to somebody. We don't want to be there for 30 minutes, having a conversation with somebody and them spitting and coughing and, you know, whatever may transmit that disease. We try to limit that, so we've got a very small window to figure, yeah, you're telling us the truth or you're not telling us the truth.
That's it. And I saw, I saw a report that came through and I, I shared it on, on social media, it showed the counties of Graham, Swain, Jaisa County. I think that part of that was about, showed how, how many people they had infected or whatever during, in those counties. Then it had like a little county out here that was like Richmond County or something, major county on the, on the coast. I think what we're doing is working, and we just got to keep it up and start filling in those little holes that people try to get around as much as we can.
I agree with you on one, that, yes, what we're doing is working. Even David Breedlove said that a while ago, Mr. Breedlove, and everybody agrees what we're doing is working. As far as passing the law for every little thing, I do not. And I, I believe what we're doing is working. I believe that lots of the calls that we've got aren't even, have anything, don't even have anything to do with the curfew, domestic violence and, and other issues where you've had to get hands-on and stuff. Some of them might have been helped by a curfew, but usually if they're breaking the law anyways, I doubt they're going to follow the curfew. And lots of people already believe we have a curfew. I've had several calls, they believe, some of them 5:00, some of them 8:00. They believe the county had an 8:00 one, the state made a 5:00 one, and I've told them, I didn't think we did, but even this morning, somebody I talked to and they said, "Oh, I thought the state had a 5:00 curfew." I said, "No, it went into effect at 5:00, the stay-at-home order," which lots of people believe that that is a curfew. They believe what stay-at-home means stay-at-home without all the other exemptions that we have, but I just don't see how this is going to change a whole lot of anything. And I still believe some people are not going to follow it. And I don't believe all of them's going to be criminals or nothing. I know turkey season's around the corner, I'd say lots of people's going to get up. This would limit that, wouldn't it, Sheriff? If you hunt on public land, you wouldn't be allowed to get up before 6:00 a.m. and get to where you is going.
You can get up anytime you want to, just.
But you couldn't be on the road or anything, right? If you have to go somewhere on public land to hunt, that would be a restriction, which lots of people fishing and stuff are getting up early and going to, I believe, to the lake and stuff. I believe what we're doing is working and that it's enough for now, but that's what I believe.
That's the recommendation, is up to this board to decide if they want to pass it or not, so that, that, that's my recommendation to the board.
Any other questions? Well, I think we're to the point where this fourth, is it the fourth or the fifth?
Fourth.
Fourth. Revamping of the COVID-19 emergency is before you. You've heard some of the discussion, you've heard the pros and the cons of what some people are thinking. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, under, because of the recommendations of our response team, I make a motion that we adapt this fourth supplemental declaration of local and state emergency, state of emergency.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion on the floor to adopt the number four supplemental to the declaration of emergency. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor to adopt this fourth supplemental to the emergency that we have in place. Manifest by raising your right hand if you approve of that motion. If you oppose that motion, please raise your right hand. Okay, we have a four to one vote there, but the supplemental, fourth supplemental is adopted.
I've, I've got a few items concerning the, the COVID as well.
Okay. Go ahead.
So a lot of people have been talking to us about variances, and I, I know that, you know, at, at this position, it's this kind of uncharted territory, so we're trying to keep everybody in Swain County safe. But I did, I did, this person asked me if I could bring this to the board, which it was brought to the emergency team last week. So the Deals Gap area, there is a hotel out in the Deals Gap area in Swain County, and that area is dissected basically from the remainder of the county. He is asking for a variance for his hotel due to the fact that his guests cannot come, cannot pass through Graham County to get back into Swain County now. So they can't shop at the grocery store, they can't do anything in the major portion of Swain County. So I think our discussion at the emergency team was that they may not can, the, the, the guest, but the people that work at that hotel would be able to come. So if they were engaged with, with cleaning that hotel and things like that, there is a possibility of, of this virus being spread that way. So that was the, the recommendation at, at the, the emergency team meeting, and that's why we didn't bring it up last week, but, but he did ask again. He's having an issue because some of his folks are being denied unemployment, so he was just asking for their benefit and trying to keep his, you know, keep them working as long as possible. So I still think the, the team's recommendation is, is as it was last week, but, but we wanted to bring it to the board, because I do see his point, that, that his people cannot, that the, the people that are staying at his hotel cannot come into the main part of Swain County. So I, I do understand that, but like I said, the emergency team thought that the people that are interacting with his guests can come, so that's why we didn't, we, we kind of denied it last week. So anyway, and I'm, I'm just bringing it for a discussion, and if y'all want to change that policy, that, that's up to the board, so.
Well, I'm hearing, I'm hearing two things that, one is if you start offering variances, why do you even have the rule in place in the first place? The second thing is that if the Swain County residents who are working there are exposed to these people, how do we plug the holes of them coming in to the grocery stores and other places to do their business? They can be carriers because of that. Now, it's my understanding that his hotel is not open now, and that would be my reasons for doing that. I would assure you that anyone who owns a motel can dream up variances and why they need it. I would, I would almost guarantee that. So if, if the team has come in with a negative response to the request for variance, I would understand that. I would have difficulty understanding what the purpose of the variance really is, because we've got other, we've got hotels, we've got motels, we've got cabins, we've got everything else that can come up with the reason that they should be allowed to rent, and we're even getting word that some of them are being rented. So, you know, how do we put a stop to it if we open up larger holes for people to crawl through? That would be my comment, and I, I want to hear from the rest of you.
I, I agree that we should not allow a variance. I think it opens up the door. So I don't know if you need that, or you may want to finish discussing it in the motion or just a, an agreement, or how are we going to do that?
Once everyone has spoken, that wants to speak, then, then we may just either do an acclamation or an agreement with the emergency team.
He shouldn't have any guests if he's shut down like the rest of us, the other motels and hotels, cabin rentals. I don't understand why he should even have guests.
He doesn't.
He doesn't.
No, he wants to be able to. That's why he's asking for the variance.
See, none of it makes sense to me.
I agree, a variance is one of those things you just open the board, that you shouldn't open. And also, if you do a variance, then you have to have a variance procedure, so it's followed by everybody, for appeal, process, all this stuff. I don't think we're in the time to do any kind of variance or anything right now.
Okay.
Well, I agree, it's okay.
Well, I agree, his hotel's closed. He's not supposed to have anybody in the game, so the rest of them, we want to leave them. Hotel closes, he's not gonna leave the variance.
Okay.
I want, I want to make one more comment that I don't know about the rest of you, but I want to make just one more comment. I have received telephone calls and some, um, emails from people who work by cleaning rooms and doing that kind of thing. And they have told me that they are glad and thankful that we have closed the motels. Because if someone's coming in from somewhere else, they have to go in and clean up. They don't know what they're cleaning up. And they have the potential of taking that home to their children or to their parents. And I think that's a very valid point at this, at this, today, I think it's a very valid point. So, um, I will entertain a motion that we deny this variance and, uh, if that's the pleasure of the board.
Do we need to vote on it?
We don't have to, but I just think that it keeps it cleaner.
We don't have a variance process.
Right, yeah. So I just think it keeps it cleaner. So everybody knows what the board has decided.
Well, once again, I think we've got to treat them the same way as everybody else. And I know from what I understand, he's wanting to rent because his guests can't come here, which I don't believe that necessarily. Anyways, I believe they could somehow if they needed to, but.
Kenneth, I'm gonna take that as a motion.
I'm, I'm making the motion to deny the variance.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. All of those who agree, please raise your right hand. And it is passed unanimously.
The other situation we ran into last week and, and Chairman Bushyhead was part of it, uh, was the walking trail at the rec park. We shut that down, uh, last Tuesday because we had concerns about people using the, the walking trail and then kind of going over into the ball fields and, and congregating. So we did shut that down. But we've had, um, a couple of people mention, uh, we should leave the walking trail open. And, um, I think the majority of, of rec parks around us have closed. Um, it's been a common practice in, in other areas, um, that they even have been shutting down greenways. Uh, our walking trail is only about four feet wide. And so the distance that people would have to come in contact with, they couldn't meet the six foot requirement if they were passing somebody on the trail. So that's why we did it, is just to keep people safe, um, as much as possible and limit the, uh, interaction between people. So didn't know if, if y'all wanted me to change that and, and open it back up, that's fine. We made that decision, um, you know, through the rec park and, and my office just to, uh, to hopefully help people and, and keep, just keep them safe. But like I say, it's, it's up to the board at this point. I just didn't, I know y'all had probably gotten some calls about that, so.
I've not gotten any calls, but I do, I do understand people's frustrations. And it, it's not gonna keep people from walking and stuff on the streets and sidewalks and, and stuff. And, and their park trails are all closed too, aren't they?
Correct.
And I know that's very frustrating and you tell people, oh, you can go out and exercise, but you ain't got anywhere to walk to. So I understand the frustration. I don't, I don't see, I, I would hope people would try to do the self distancing or whatnot, but, uh, I don't see them doing it at the grocery store neither though. At the grocery store, you're not.
The aisle is maybe like three feet.
It's not gonna be, I mean, that, I don't really see a problem with leaving the trail open. We have the gate closed, so they can't park down there, can they? Is the gate closed or is it?
They can park at the bottom. The gate's closed right there past the parking lot.
Okay, so it's open with the rec park, with the pool parking lot's open.
And they also can park up at the, uh, the soccer field parking lot as well.
Up at the top.
Well, I recognize, excuse me, I recognize that we, um, don't have as much traffic on the streets. If they, if they indeed are using the trail, then it would keep them out of traffic and off the roads. So I, I see that as a positive. How do we patrol the, the trail to make sure people aren't using that to go over the fence? As has been stated before that they do that. People from the hospital upon the hill, people who live up there, come down, from my understanding, come down and use the trail. So the question becomes, how much of a safety issue is it? And versus the health issue of getting out and walking? I mean, that's a, that's a question that, I can see, I can see the curfew, I can see all the other stuff. That one's kind of a little bit fuzzy in my mind as to, you know, if, do we tell them to get out and exercise and ask them, uh, to use the trail? I don't know how much the trail has been used in the past. Has it been used in the past?
It's been used, yes.
It's been used, okay.
And this, this came, um, Sheriff Cockerham had called me on, I think it was last Tuesday. So there was some concern about people that were kind of jumping on, over the fence and getting on the fields and things like that and.
We'd had a group come up from out of state and they went to the ball fields. Whether they drove to the ball fields or walked the trail and jumped over the fence, I'm not 100% clear on. But they were there on the ball fields, practicing ball, throwing ball, exercising. So we told them they couldn't be there. And then that, that started up a big conversation between me and, and, uh, I guess the parent of one of these, one of these kids, not, not kids, but adults, because they're, they're all in college and, uh, one of them playing professional ball, I think. So not knowing whether they came across the fence or not by walking the trail, I asked Kevin if he would consider just closing the, closing the trail down and, and stopping all that, trespassing really is what it is, uh, i- if they are jumping the fence and going on the ball fields. And one of them, I don't think they would even have to jump the fence. They would just, uh, the upper ball field, they could, they could walk right onto it off the trail.
At the dugout, we don't have, we don't have gates.
I'm sorry, say again.
We don't have gates at the dugout, so.
Oh.
They can walk right out.
Give me your, what are you thinking?
Well, I'm thinking that it always, only a few people mess things up for the majority of people. And, uh, I also think that if we are taking this as serious as we should be, the next couple of weeks could be, could tell us a lot about what is going to be happening to us soon. I don't have an issue with closing down the, um, entire rec park, including the walking trail, for the next couple of weeks, just to convey the seriousness of what we are handling and, and what we're dealing with. I think it's easily to be revisited in a couple of weeks or at the end of the month. I think these things are, um, we're doing them, we're putting them into place and we can take them out of place just as easily when we see how the numbers start rolling in. And I think numbers, it, it's gonna be very interesting. I think our group up here will say our, our numbers are gonna, uh, North Carolina numbers are gonna be different. They're gonna look different in a couple of weeks, I'm afraid. So, uh, I don't have any problem with maintaining the closure of that. Uh, I'm not doing it out of maintenance, not doing it for any other reason, but just public health and public safety. And I, I think there's other places to walk. I don't want us to be responsible in, on county property for, uh, someone getting or spreading the COVID virus.
Thank you.
I see the trail as, uh, useful in, in some ways. I, I agree with Kevin, there's places you have a hard time distancing. But as far as people getting on the fields and stuff, that's gonna, I think that's gonna happen anyway if they want on the fields. They can come down from Hospital Hill or wherever they want to. They can park down at your, down at the Pepsi building and walk up. I think that's a situation where if they're on there, they're charged with trespassing then. If that's closed, uh, they, they don't have no business on there. Even if the walking trail's open and the fields are closed and somebody's on them, they could be charged for trespassing on those fields. The walking, to me, the walking trail really doesn't have anything to do with the people being on the fields. I don't, the people, I don't think the people that walk on the trail are gonna go around the trail and say, well, oh, that field's open, let's jump out there and play ball. I think the people that want to, like that group or any other groups that would want to go and play ball on those fields are gonna go play ball on them, regardless where they had to park and walk if they wanted to. Cause they're easily accessible, come any direction you go, as far as that goes. I mean, I, I, I'd kind of like agree with Roger about the two weeks and see how things go and maybe relieve some of that stuff. But as far as getting on the ball fields, I think that should be monitored. If people are on there, it's not supposed to be on them. You know, you get up and ask them to leave. And then at some point you have to start citing people if they continue to break that.
Yeah, I'm kinda on both sides also. I think, uh, there is, it's a trail. If I want to go here and walk around the federal building, I could. If county property wanna go walk around the admin building, I could. Uh, I know that there is people that break those laws and jump over the fence or whatever. We're always gonna have those. But I also look at the side of, we're doing unconventional things right now because we don't know what we're, we don't know exactly what this thing tells. So I'm agreeing with Roger on that. It may be we shut it down for a couple of weeks, see what it looks like, come back and revisit this thing. Because, and I, I honestly, even on the curfew thing, I think we need to come back and revisit it in a couple of weeks and see if, see if it's working or if it's not, you know, see what, because there's, uh, we don't know. And if this thing wraps up, like media says, I'm not a big media guy, but, um, then we, we gotta do everything we can, be precautionary about this thing. And, uh, we can, we can easily back up and we can go forward. So I'm agreeing that if we, if we're gonna leave it closed, leave it closed for next week or two, let's see what that looks like. It hurts everybody.
Re-eval, yeah.
It hurts me a lot, I feel about like this and stuff like that. Like I, I like to, you know, get up and go and stuff, but I won't do it now. Called, just because if it keeps somebody else alive, then I can forego what I really want to do. I've had, I've had to do that a lot here in the last few weeks. I really wanted to burn a fire last night. North Carolina shut down, a barn burned. I've been doing that every night, that's my getaway. But I understand if, if a fire gets out of my house and, and it causes other people being harm's way or causing people being, it, it, last thing you need in the mountains is a big fire going on and, and the code in people's lungs and they can't breathe. So I, I get that. So there's some sacrifices that must be made on our end to see this thing eradicated. And so I think that maybe that's an easy sacrifice.
Okay. Can I, can I use your words, Roger, and just simply say that we will, uh, you don't have any staff at rec, do you?
Um, well, we do currently, yes, but.
Okay, I was just thinking that if somebody got hurt on that, that'd be kind of hard to.
Yeah.
Respond to.
Yeah. And so that's why he, I think Roger mentioned the end of the month because then the next thing we're gonna talk about is the closure of the buildings starting the 20th through the May 1st.
Okay, okay. If it's okay, why don't we talk about that and then add the two together and just set a timeframe and, and evaluate as you keep, keep pointing out we need to do. Why don't we do that? Go ahead with that.
So we've been talking about, you know, when the possible peak is gonna be in North Carolina, when specifically it's gonna be in Swain County. And so we've kind of identified, um, May the 20th through, uh, I'm sorry, April 20th through May the 1st. It's kind of been the peak in our area. It could be a little bit, you know, earlier, it could be a little bit later. But that's, seems to be from the data that we've, we've had, um, is, is the kind of the timeframe. So we're just going to be encouraging everybody to just stay home as much as possible, including some of the county staff, the non-essential county staff. And so what I, what we're proposing is just to close all the, um, close the, the two main buildings. Uh, of course, we have to keep, you know, essential services, uh, DSS, uh, Health Department, uh, Public Safety, um, and Sanitation kind of going. Uh, but we have protocols in place at each one of those departments and, and kind of a, a switch out of staff. So it'll be a, a skeletal, uh, staff at those buildings. We'll be responding, um, you know, to everybody that, that needs services. But, um, but anyway, that's kind of what we're proposing. Uh, what we wanted to do is just, uh, add, uh, 80 hours PTO or paid time off to the employees. And then if, uh, they use it, they're not two weeks, great. If they don't, for instance, the, uh, Public Safety folks, that'll be added to their account for future use and things like that. So just for those two week period. And then we'll be back, uh, hopefully, May the 1st. Uh, everything is kind of fluid, so at this point, but we, we want to make sure that, uh, we do this at the peak, so. But that's our recommendation by the, by the team. And, and we've been kind of gearing up, um, creating some policies internally to try to make sure that we have all of our, uh, needed services, essential services operating and, and, uh, so anyway, that, that, that's the proposal from the, from the team.
Again, I'm gonna ask, um, what each one is thinking about this. And, uh, if we pass this, we will just slip the, um, rec park, walking, just under it, so that we all are examining it again in two weeks or.
It'd be May 1st.
It'd be May 1st, okay. Danny, what are, what are you hearing and what do you think?
I think it's probably a good idea. Again, there's just so much that we don't know. We're, like I said, we're, we're trying to take every precaution we can. We're assuming the peak is then, maybe then the month, we don't know. But I, I guess you gotta be proactive and do something.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree, I think it's a good idea. I think, uh, one part of it is the mental part of it. People have a little work, be around people and they know that this is the peak, uh, next two weeks are peak. And, you know, we got the people that can't help it, the MS workers and, uh, different, uh, things like that. But I think as much as we can limit exposure in these next two weeks, I think probably the better off we are. And I'll definitely look back and say, well, let me go and then hope that's the best.
I'm fine with the recommendation of shutting them.
I'm good with it as well. Could I have the dates again? What, what's the date line you were thinking for the closing of buildings?
Yeah, the 20th, uh, through May the 1st, which is actually gonna be the 17th. So the 17th will be the last day, which is next Friday.
And that also then coincides with the projected peak time? And that's why we have those dates at that time?
David, we, we can talk about the peak and I know it.
Well, I, I.
Every website is different, so.
Well, and I think that's gonna be fluid and it may change day to day. But that's the projection that we have, the best projection we have at this time then, I think. Is that right?
Right, and I think that it's important for the people to know that we can extend or shorten, but we can extend if necessary.
Right.
I'm also in favor, Mr. Chairman, of the 8-hour PTO to try to, uh, take care of our employees, uh, best we can. So I'm in favor of doing this. I think it, I, I think it represents and, and shows a good, uh, that we're trying. And, uh, so I'm in favor of it, Mr. Chairman.
So I'm gonna take that, Roger, as a motion on the floor.
Mr. Chairman, I will put it in form of motion that we adapt or the closings, May 20th or 17th?
April 20th through May the 1st.
That's, I'm sorry, yes. April, uh, 17th through May 1st. In that motion, are we gonna contain the eight hour, 80 hour PTO as well? Or that be separately?
You can do that the same way.
I'll include, I'll include the addition of the 80 hour PTO to all county employees.
Okay. And also slipping into that, the, the trail at the park.
Well, yes, sir. Well, if the, if the buildings are closed and everything's closed in the whole county, I'd say the property is closed as well then.
Gotcha, gotcha. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. All of those in favor of passing this motion to close the.
I want to, now, we're closing the offices and stuff for our employees and people coming in and out of the buildings. We're still not closing. We're still not closing, I still don't think the trail. I'd like to do that separate because, I mean, like I said, you can still walk the sidewalks. You can walk in front of all these buildings and stuff. It don't really make a lot of sense for the trail to be closed down to me, so I'd like to separate that.
Mr. Chairman, I'll withdraw my motion and I'll make it in the form of closing the buildings and adding the 80-hour PTO and then we can put the other separately.
That's fine. Okay, everyone understanding the motion. We have, need a second to that motion.
Second.
Okay, and we did have a second to that motion, but that's with the withdrawal. Okay. Any other questions on that particular issue? If not, manifest it by raising your right hand if you agree. Pass the motion, motion passed unanimously. Okay, now then to back up a little bit and pick up the Rick Park Trail. I need a, go ahead.
I just have one more comment about that. So the two weeks, the 17th through the 1st, we will have nobody at the Rick Park. No county employee will be there. So if there is an injury at that facility, there's going to be nobody there to respond. So that would be the modality consideration, there's a certain amount of liability that the county has.
Right, and I thought, we asked that and I thought that was clear, but it wasn't. So, thank you, sir. Okay, so we've got a motion, or we need a motion on the floor to not, to, we haven't included it, so now it's open by itself. To close as recommended to us, the Rick Park walking trail. Any comments before we move on this? Okay, I need a motion to either close or not close the park walking trail.
I'll make the motion that we close the trail. As the rest of the Rick Park's being closed.
Thank you, Danny. I was going to say, we can't sit here and look at each other, we got to do something. Okay, so we do have a motion on the floor.
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and we have a second on the floor as well. And the motion was to keep it open or to close it then?
Close it.
Close it, okay. We have a motion to close, we have a second. Any other discussion?
Until what date? Do you want to set a date or just...
Oh, well, I thought it was going parallel.
To May 1st, May the 1st.
April 17th to May the 1st, okay? Because no personnel will be there.
Okay, so we want to open it up between now and the 17th? Or we want to keep it remain closed from now until May the 1st?
Okay, it is closed now.
Currently, yes.
Okay. So Danny, would you mind amending your motion?
I'll amend the motion to have it closed, continue to be closed from now until May the 1st.
Okay, thank you very much. Oh, you're comfortable with accepting that?
Oh, yes, sir.
Okay, so now the motion on the floor is the Rick Park walking trail remain closed and be closed until May the 1st when we'll come back and revisit it. Okay, everybody understand the motion? Okay. All of those in favor of the motion, please manifest by raising your right hand. Okay, all of those opposed, please manifest by raising your right hand. Okay, we pass that four to one. Okay. Anything else?
Yep, just some, some resources for, we've got a lot of businesses that are not doing business and we've got a lot of employees that are unemployed at this point. So just wanted to let you know there are several websites out there, including Swain County's websites, that we've got some resources on there for unemployment. We also have some resources for the businesses to have like short-term loans and a lot of different other, other things on there. So just wanted to let the people know that there is resources available and that we can help, help them through that process, so.
May I say from my understanding that there's some local resources, there's some state resources and some national resources we hope are coming online?
Correct, and we do have, of course, links to all of those on our website. And so just if anybody has any questions, please do not hesitate to give us a call.
Okay.
Also, in our emergency team meeting yesterday, we talked about the construction industry here in Swain County and a lot of different discussions. We had about a two-hour meeting yesterday, so I did want to let the board know that we are going to be sending out a letter to each of the contractors that currently have projects in the area, just talking about if you've got out-of-state employees and they do leave, they, when they come back, they are required to do the 14-day quarantine. Also, we encourage people that are commuters, like, so we have a couple of projects going on right now that they work in, they live in Asheville and work here. If they are commuter, we are asking them, you know, not, not to go to the grocery stores or the gas stations to go from the job site home. And so that's going out probably today or tomorrow one as far as a letter goes. We did that and one of the conversations was we were debating whether to stop all construction for the two-week period. But that, it seemed better just to work with the contractors and just explain to them our situation. One of the other things that Sheriff was asking for is a means to identify workers that are in project. So we've asked them to come up with a letter to give each employer, employee with their name, address and driver's license number where the Sheriff's Office can validate that they are a legal working person here. So we're kind of doing other steps, kind of behind the scenes to try to help alleviate some of the stresses that his deputies have when they pull over somebody, so.
Excuse me, just a second. That was info on...
Correct, yes. All of that is really consistent with, with the orders already in place, so. And that's it on the COVID.
That's it? Go ahead.
My apologies, I meant to mention this earlier. We are updating the Swain County website as well as our Facebook page every day with the number of cases or the number of tests that are being completed and those that are coming back negative or positive. So the public can look at that every day, probably after lunchtime for that.
Good, thank you.
Also, Roger had emailed and asked about the case fatality rates with COVID influenza and such as that, and I forgot to mention that. So looking back at just different rates throughout our history, I just wanted to bring that to the forefront. And the 1918 influenza was roughly 2.5%. Rabies is 99%. Ebola was roughly 50%. SARS is roughly 10%. Influenza is roughly 0.1%. Now, I bring that up because everybody wants to compare influenza with COVID-19, but with case fatality, with flu being 0.1 in the United States, COVID-19 is currently 3%. North Carolina is roughly 1.4%. Did that answer your questions, Roger?
It does, and I think that, I think you're, I wrote the number down, 3%.
Yes, sir.
And if you take a population of 14,000 and then you have 3% of 14,000, that's a big number and I don't think anybody wants to say...
Well, no, for Swain, for North Carolina, it's 1.4%. In the United States, it's 3%.
United States, the total is 3. North Carolina's 1.4.
Yes, sir.
Well, 1.4% of our, 1.4% of our total population is still a big number if you look at it that way. So I don't think anybody would want to pick, well, that's over 140-some, 100, whatever the math is at, of our citizens that they would like to see perish because of this. So I think it's a number that we need to be aware of and take all steps, Mr. Chairman. And Allison, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
One other question back, does the county buildings include school buildings?
That's up to the school board, so, to do that.
There are county buildings, but...
Correct.
But it'd be up to their call as far as closing, because I had that question.
Correct, and we have been working with the school system and have informed them that what we're doing the next two weeks and they are looking at different things that they can do to try to minimize the people, you know, where they, where they can keep them at home as well. But they're under different requirements by the state and also working with their IT to get online education. So they're having a little bit of issues with having to put a stop to everything and it would be kind of, kind of difficult. But anyway, they are looking at that and hopefully can partner with us on this and in any business out there that, you know, we think that this, this is a good time to kind of band together and, and if we can stay home those two weeks, that's what we're suggesting, so.
One other thing, I've got a question here just for discussions. Some people are having a problem filing for unemployment because they don't have computer internet access. The public access to computers is closed. We don't have anywhere there's public computers now, do we? There's no one at NC Works able to help these people file for unemployment. The question is, is there another non-location where people can use public computers?
Right now, mostly it is just hotspots. So a lot of hotspots are open.
No public computers though?
The library is closed and is remaining closed. So I know NC Works, they are on a appointment only, I believe, through cell phones, so maybe they could be reached to discuss if they don't have internet access.
We see there's no one at NC Works that's able to help these people file for unemployment.
We can check on that. If you'll give them the resource, give them our number, then we can...
Well, this is someone that has them, they're just asking the question, it actually works in our DSS department's asking this.
Oh, okay.
So I would assume they would have the number they would need, but I was just kind of referring that on because I didn't have the answer.
We have, we've actually helped several people with our resources to get unemployment. It is a, their website is inundated right now because there's a lot of people filing and so, but we have helped several people. They just need to call us and we can, we can try to work through that, through the issues that they've got.
Okay, you don't want to take over for NC Works, but you will help people if they can't get it anywhere else, they help anywhere else.
Yeah, NC Works, it's kind of segregated is the problem. So NC Works does not actually do unemployment. NC Works is more career path and they've got counselors for that purpose. All the unemployment is now done online through a different department with, all underneath the umbrella of North Carolina Department of Commerce. So it's kind of been difficult navigating and knowing, you know, the difference between the two of them, so.
Well, I think if the public hears this, that begin to understand better what they need to be doing to do this.
And if anybody has problems, they can call us, we'll try to work through them with their issues.
Good. Anything else?
I can, one final comment. It's mostly to the citizens of the county. If you see something posted on Facebook that says someone has COVID, has their name and their address, that's probably not true. Please go to the county website, the Health Department's Facebook page and verify that before anyone passes that on. We actually had to dispatch law enforcement officers to a business last week because of a false report like that. So please, anyone who sees on Facebook that someone has the COVID, please verify it. The Health Department's not going to say who it is or where they're located. So first of all, in that Facebook post, if it says, has a name or a location, that's not official, it didn't come from us. So we're tracking lots of those and trying to spill those rumors, so.
I was told just yesterday, David, that there were two active cases in Swain County.
Yes, sir.
They didn't know who they were talking to, but they told me that and told me to stay safe, so.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Allison, any additional? Okay. What we're going to do is take about a 10-minute break and kind of separate this from the other thing we're coming back to do and the other thing's going to be very interesting because it's the budget, so. Okay? 10 minutes, guys. Yes.
If you could inform the board to turn the mics off at this time and then you will turn them back on.
Okay, turn your mics off, guys, please. Commissioners, I keep, I'm going to get out of that garage habit.
Looking at a replacement program for the HVAC systems. We have probably, I think there's twelve, twelve different HVAC systems at the jail and law enforcement center. And so what we want to do is create a program where we're replacing two of those a year. And hopefully we can, we can get about by the end of it, we'll have them all replaced. Because they are, they all were put in in two thousand and six, so they're going on. They're fourteen years old, one on fifteen, this next budget cycle. So we do need to start looking at, at doing some of that. The other part, the big, big ticket item is going to be a new boiler. There's two boilers in, in the facility. We replaced one of them this past year. And then now we'll need to replace the other one. If not this year, maybe the following year, but we do need to keep, get that on our radar.
Excuse me?
Yep.
When did we leave the jail and move to other projects?
That's all then to jail.
All of this is at the jail?
Correct.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, yeah, the boiler, the HVAC sys, two HVAC systems and the grinder.
Okay.
Is the three big ticket items for this next year.
Gotcha, gotcha.
And then the sheriff is here, so if he wants to talk about that or anything.
Well, we've got to keep him comfortable, don't we?
Exactly. So.
I think Kevin explained pretty well when you got back questioning.
You can't answer this sheriff, but I was just wondering, as we look at these projects, are there any that is, that you're anticipating we need to replace first? Or are they pretty much, we hang on until they go out, or I mean, what's going on with them?
The grinder pump is probably the most critical because we have been asked by the town of Brussels City to, to fix this for a few years now. They have been saying that the, the jail has a certain amount of waste that is not going through that grinder and it's getting into their, I guess filtration system at the sewer plant. And so they would like us to fix that grinder.
If we do that, what timeframe are we looking at? When would you start trying to find one or get one? And what time, then what timeframe are we looking at?
It'll be within the first six months of the new fiscal year that we would need to be fixing this.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead.
Kevin, on the grinder pump, you said something about fixing, moving it down the hill, putting like a grease trap or something above it, is that right?
Well, making it all, yeah, basically it's a, what we'd want to do is, basically a grease trap is just another tank. So we put in another tank at the bottom of the hill. That basically slows the water pressure down. So when the water comes down, it'll go into the new tank. Then from that, the affluent comes out of that tank into the grinder pump and then it'll go into the system. That's what I was, that's what my, our thought process is, is to create that. It's basically to slow the water down before it goes into the grinder. It's, it'll go into that second tank.
And with all the other plumbing stuff we done, we done in the past, for the valves and stuff, have we got any more information on that back? Have we changed all the valves or whatever that was that we were fixing?
We're in the process of doing that, yes.
Okay, and that will?
I don't, I don't know where we are in that process because that was already budgeted.
Last time I talked with Kevin, he was getting up with Hanes.
Hanes, yep.
And they were going to come out and try to show them where all those lines were at. Maybe you can contact with him, put it in, call that back, that's our information, it's not his. And that's been, who were we reaching when I talked about, I don't really know where that went?
Yeah, that, that could have been delayed because of this other stuff, so.
And as far as number one things, the grinder pump would be the number one thing we need to fix immediately at the jail? Or all of them are pretty much number one things?
That's what she requested is that we clean up a bunch of our disposal if we can, going into their system. So I would say that'd be pretty high.
Sheriff, you would mind just grabbing that microphone, you can handle it if you like.
I understand.
Oh, thank you.
Just repeat what you said sheriff, so he can test this.
The, the city has requested that, that we reinstall that grinder pump to clean up as much disposal as we can going into their system. That, that would probably be pretty high on the, on the priority list.
And the HVAC system, the two HVAC units, you want to do that? One maybe this year, this coming year and one the next year?
Yeah, we, we take, we've got one that we just, I think we just replaced it. Or we just ordered a new compressor, I think we'll order a new compressor for it. But we want to take the, the worst one, because there's twelve of them out there. So it's a big, this is, these are high dollar systems. And so we want to take one, maybe at least one a year. And then if we can factor in two, that would be good also. But we did replace one of the compressors. So that one, that unit is doing a lot better now and hopefully we can get a few more years out of it, so.
One of the issues we're facing with, with especially the bigger units is the coals. They're rusting out and we had one to start spewing water the other day and it flooded the booking area. Just a small leak under pressure puts out a lot of water. So we're, we're having to replace all them as we, as we go there. Hardly any way to repair them, so you got to replace them.
And the boiler, we need to do it before?
The second boiler is a backup boiler.
It's a backup boiler.
So it's not been used as much as the primary. So it, it, we could probably use, I mean, it's just something we need to put on the radar, but I would think that we can get three or four more years out of it. Because we do have the primary boiler, was put back online this past year. So, but we, at some point we do. And when we, those are done by inspectors. So we get those boilers inspected once a year and then they kind of give us a report. And we had to replace the primary boiler because it was significantly decayed. And so we had to replace it last year. But I think, you know, if we can get three or four more years out of it, but this is just something, if we can start putting back and, and coming up with a plan. Just want to let you all know about the big, big ticket items in the next three to four years that we're looking at, so.
One more question on replacement of valves and stuff. The town that was doing the pressure, what kind of pressure valves were those? That they were recommended, did we have one already at the sheriff's department?
Pressure reducing valves, yes.
Or did we have to replace them? Did we need to go ahead and do those?
I don't know if we replaced them. So, so with the jail, it's a little bit different than a standard. We actually have two taps. So when we, when we are required to have those put in, and they're backflow preventers is what they are basically. But I don't think we've got them on there currently. I'll have to check on that, I don't, I don't know. I know we've put them on several other buildings. I know we had to put them on the spec building out at the industrial park, but not sure if we've been required to put them on, on that building yet. A lot of it has to do with, the reason we have two different taps is because of the water pressure for the sprinkler system. So I know we, I think we've got one on the sprinkler system part because we didn't, we, with sprinkler system, that's where the really issue was to begin with. Because you've got stagnant water and that pressure, it can leak back into the main line. And that, that's what the concern is, is bacteria leaking back into the system. And so that's why those, those valves are, are like that. Now, what is the name of the valve?
It's RPZ valve.
RPZ valve, but basically it's a backflow preventer.
Yes, backflow preventer. It's, it can be tested. A lot of back, backflow preventers can't be tested, RPZs can't be tested. And you can test every pressure that they're working correctly. I'm sure we got one on the sprinkler system.
Yeah.
I think that's possible that, and we may have one on the domestic, domestic water also. I'm not sure about that either, but I'm pretty sure there is one.
Yeah.
Kevin, who checks, I'm sorry sheriff, who checks those? When you say they, they're checked, who checks them?
Right now, nobody. That's why the town's coming up with this addition. They will have somebody that will come in yearly and test these valves to make sure that they're working properly.
Okay, but with the back pressure valve, that's because of the water pressure that they've had to add. For whatever reason, the motel, on the hotel is one of the reasons that I've heard. If that creates problems, who's responsible financially for replacing those? Would it be the individual owner or who, who would do that? I mean, they're, they're adding that, not, not the, not the consumer or in this case us.
I actually talked to the town about this a while back and I'm not exactly sure exactly how that's going to work out. Some of these things are going to cost maybe a few hundred dollars and some of them are going to cost a few thousand dollars. So it's according what kind of size line you've got it on. It's according on the location that you're going to have to have it put in. A lot of small, and they got, the town's broken up the businesses into different categories. There are some that are more dangerous, I guess you would say, than other businesses are. So like, a business that doesn't really have any way of infiltrating the water system in the town by something, some of the chemicals or something, it's not going to have, you're not going to have such a big problem. RPZ valve, you're there, you can go get away with a double check valve. So they've not really come out with all what they're doing with town yet on that date. I'm sure they will, so.
And, and I'm going to ask this, and I don't know if you know or not, but do they have any kind of insurance coverage that would help persons replace those? And now I'm back to our, that if we have to put new ones in for everything we put in, that's, that can start to add up to.
I don't, I don't love that answer, I don't.
No, I didn't think you would, but that would be my question if you have a conversation with someone.
We, we can definitely have a conversation with the town. I think it, they're, they're between six and eight thousand dollar, I think for the jail is what we crossed out for those different valves. So just for one valve, so we would have to have two just for the jail. And we'll have to do every building. So I don't even think this building or the adminis, the courthouse has it on there as well, so.
Okay, thank you, thank you both of you. Sheriff, I didn't mean to interrupt you, were you going to say something?
I was just going to give a simple definition of RPG or backflow preventer. It's a, it's a check valve.
I'm sorry?
A check valve.
Oh, okay.
Let water in, but it don't let water out.
Right, okay, thank you.
Was this a state mandated law to do these like this?
I think it's handed down by the state and then county that can enforce it.
Yeah, that's what I've heard. Is that there was a state regulated item that they, they should have had these on the system. And so they're, they're just now enforcing it.
Thank you.
I think that's it for the jail, so.
Hopefully.
Hopefully.
Thanks sheriff.
We'll still stay on the, a town as a topic. So the next one is, and we, we kind of went ahead and, and looked at this. So when the old jail was taken down, we had a contractor and that was DH Griffin, I think out of Hickory. They came up and took down the jail. At that point, we put in, according to our staff, we had put in some caps over the sewer lines. And we've got the erosion pond, which is basically a sediment pond over at the old jail facility and the courthouse over there. And so some of that water that's in that pond is now leaking back into the sewer system. So the town is wanting to replace the main line through there because there's a lot of uninvestigated taps, including the two that, that was with the, with the old jail facility. They can't, I, I don't have any documentation and, and the staff, we, we can't determine if they were capped correctly by town specs. So they're going to be tearing up our parking lot to replace that main line, doing a six feet by one hundred foot section and replacing it. It's the old clay pipe, so they're going to be replacing that with a new ductal iron and taking out all those taps that were put in, you know, a hundred years ago. So anyway, with that said, they, since we can't really determine if, if the taps were done correctly and that sort of thing, their cameras are seeing that the taps weren't done correctly. So that, that is leaking back in the system. They want us to participate with them on, on just repaving. So they'll, they'll do all the work, they'll fix all the lines and all that stuff and we'll just have to repave what they've put in, what they've torn out. So that would be the only other issue with the town. I went ahead and said, you know, we, we can't verify that the taps were done correctly or not and that, that's been, you know, fifteen years ago. So there's no documentation from either DH Griffin or our, our staff that were here. With, there's no documentation that they actually did the taps correctly. And it's, it's a lot the town's fault, they admit it. It's, it's their fault for not being on site when all that happened. And also some of our liability as well. So we're kind of partnering with them on that project, but didn't want to let you know about it, that, that pavement will be tore up and, and they'll have to fix that main line. And then we'll go back in and, and fix the, fix the pavement.
The main line that you're talking about is from where to where Kevin? Is that, is that at the motel over or is that?
It, it basically goes almost vertical to the Everett Hotel. And then you've got the law offices there and then Bennett's place there. So it kind of goes in that alleyway. The original alleyway was only about ten feet wide between, there used to be a building like right next to the, were there ten feet of that building? So there was a ten foot alleyway there. And then another building, which was, used to be the, how's the old EMS building and then the jail. So that one building in my lifetime was gone. But, but so, it's changed so much, I wouldn't, I couldn't tell you where exactly it is. But I would speculate it's in that alleyway, the ten foot alleyway between that one first, the first building and then the, the building that was torn down, I think back in the fifties. So I think it's probably in that alleyway. I know there's a, the manhole there.
I was just wondering how disruptive that was going to be to the businesses actually and.
It's going to be disruptive. Yeah, so we're going to have to alert, you know, our, our tenants and, and also the law offices there that, that there's going to be a disruption of the parking, parking space. But, you know, the, the town has a right of way and, and they, they need their lines fixed, so. Okay. We talked about the courthouse project. And then kind of in discussion, we'd, we'd had an architect going to give us a proposal. They are working on trying to get their proposal ready where we can at least look at going out for bid. Also looking at USDA as far as a possible funder, either a grant, loan or, or all alone. Because at this point, they're historically low interest rates, so be a good time to do that. We don't, I don't know the, the amount. I mean, I can't, I can't tell you an amount. He's, he's doing two different proposals. One, looking at where we were going to add on to the backside where we had the two. I think at one time we had the Holland sales lot right outside behind the district courtroom. We're now adding a new, new courtroom. That, that was kind of what we're, we talked about that early on. So we don't know if it would be easier to do it on that side or if it would be easier just to build another building out adjacent in that side parking lot. So he's going to do, they're doing kind of a study on what is going to be the best and the cheapest. And so then we'll, we'll come back to you. But it, it's going to be, what I'm asking for this, this particular year is just money is just to do the architectural engineering stuff. So it will probably only be in the thirty thousand dollar range this year. And that'll be within the administrative budget just for, for, for that part. If we can get it going, you know, later on, maybe this time next year, hopefully we can go out to bid. But that'll be a whole nother conversation and we'll just do that through the budget amendment because we'll have, of course, a loan to do that with. The next one, I think y'all have copies of this, is the pool. So there is only one drawing here and I called Jim to ask where the other two drawings were. And he indicated that the folks had looked at, at three different drawings. This is, this particular one is the most inexpensive. And it's basically putting in the beach entrance at the front where the, where the shallow end is and moving the lanes to the other end. And the deep end would now go up to eight feet deep instead of twelve feet. And the slides will be moved to the opposite side. So that's what you currently have in front of you there. So this particular price, we did get a price on it. We are working with, with the contractors, see what the price, if we can get it any lower. But this current, as turnkey, having them do it without any county staff is three hundred and eighty-two thousand. We are working to see if we can partner with them to reduce that by at least a hundred thousand. And that'll kind of get us back into the realm, what we, we talked about early on, between two fifty and three hundred is what we kind of projected. We did get a hundred thousand dollar grant from, so that brings the cost down to now two hundred and eighty-two. So, and I just need to kind of, I guess, I guess moving forward, this particular plan, like I said a minute ago, is the one that the architect, or the designer recommends. It's the less invasive, it's, it's almost like building, it's really building a pool within a pool and it's, it's really creating a brand new pool. And you'll see some of the work that they've done. The, I think that one is the Canton, the Canton Pool. They, they do fabulous work, turnkey job and, and hopefully it'll last another forty-two years without any significant issues. The only thing that I did suggest in that quote, which will, will be a little bit different, is if we're going to have the brand new pool, we won't gun out. We do not want a, a liner. From what I've been told by other pool professionals, if you put a liner in, liners last about fifteen years. Gun out will last about thirty. And so that's, if we're going to do it, we might as well do it correct and then we won't have to worry about it for thirty years. So that would be, that was my only suggestion and only price difference. So it may be increased just a little bit, gun out versus the liner, so. But that's only a real major difference. We will get the other two. The other two designs was incorporated the beach entrance like we talked about before, down the deep end. They thought that, that was, the designer thought it was, based on the site, wouldn't work as feasible as doing it this way. So, and we can have discussions. If you want to have a, a whole meeting with the advisory group, we can do that. However, y'all want to handle, you know, picking the design or if you want to go with this design or if you want to have Jim give the design to the, you know, the advisory board, we can do that and see what they think.
Chairman, I'm sorry to give.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I believe we need to get the advisory board here and Jim Brown and talk about it all. I have a question on the deep end section that was twelve feet. Exactly how? I know the, the, the main issue with that, from what I understood, was it sinking and stuff? And maybe the ground underneath it is not going to be good? Is this taken into consideration, all that?
Yeah, so there was so many cubic feet of water has so much weight. So all that was factored in when, when they did it. The deep end, we've had several issues. One is of course the, it was built on a marsh. But two, we've got plumbing problems. And so that's one of the biggest reasons we've, we've been experiencing leakage for several years now. And we, we can have to continually fill back up the pool on a daily basis. And so that's, that's, we've determined that, that it's coming from that area. So that's one of the reasons that it, either way, we're going to bust it up. If you kept it or if you did what we're doing. What we're doing here is the less invasive because you're going to be putting brand new plumbing in the system and not having to mess with, with the plumbing underneath. If you do go back in and, and we do that, we'll be doing the same thing, but we'll be busting up every bit of it to replace the plumbing there. So this is the less invasive. This is like building a pool within this pool, is what it is. There'll be new walls on the side, there'll be new floor and it's going to be poured right over top of what's existing. So the square footage is going to decrease, basically it'll be four inches on the walls and six inches on the bottom. But it'll be, the gutter will be raised, so as far as the depth, the depth will be, be the same or similar. So I know there's been a lot of discussion about the pool and, and how to, how the money's involved. So we are getting the pool ready for this summer. We're still on that, that path to open this summer and currently. And so we've got Renosis hopefully coming in if, if we can. We have to work through their issue because they're coming from out of state to fix the pool. So we're going to have to work through some of that quarantine with, with them as well. But hopefully they'll be in in the next couple of weeks and fix it the way it is. We're trying to get this ready to go before August. So we do need to get that rather quickly with advisory board if, if that's what you want to do. I can go to that advisory board meeting and, and, you know, talk about this or if y'all want to have them, you know, come, we can, we can possibly have a, have them in this meeting room over here and have them virtually talking to us to kind of work through this, this month or if you want to wait till, till May to see if, if this other stuff calms down some. We can wait till after this event is over, however you want to proceed.
I was still wondering, like you said, the construction that's supposed to be going on right now to fix it. So we're open all summer.
Yep.
How's that going to be affected by what we're doing?
It will be affected. We're, we're going to try to, because we, we don't know where these contractors are coming from. And they have to go by our rules. So they may have to come in and quarantine for fourteen days and, and then they can fix it. So we'll, we'll just have to say either that or they can, they can commute. You know, they don't have to stay in Swan County. They can, they can have, stay in another, another county and then come in once, once a day and, and do their work and then leave, like we're, like we're talking about with other contractors. So we're going to be working with those folks to, to, you know, work through this issue with them.
And what have we decided for them to fix exactly? We're paying them to?
Basically it's just the liner.
The liner?
The, the liner is, is busted. So they're going to be fixing the deep end and that is going to cost about four thousand dollars to fix. And that'll just get us ready for the two months and then we'll be, so, and that's if, if we, you know, all of it's if, you know, because we don't know, you know, with this current situation, will we even be open to the pool? At this point, we can't tell you that answer. We don't know what's the best. Everybody's making their decisions, May first, around May first. If it's, if it still continues, it's still on the rise, you don't want to promote, you know, people going in, in places like, like the pool. So we may not even open. But if we are, we got to get it ready. So we're kind of in, stuck in the middle here of not knowing, so.
We definitely need to be ready to proceed to this in August.
Correct.
If we're going to.
So I, I guess my suggestion, if you want a suggestion from me, is maybe wait till May first, get with the advisory board, you know, middle of May and then we'll work through the plan and then get it in the budget and maybe have to do a budget amendment even in the interim process. maybe have to do a, a budget amendment even in the interim process to put it in where we can start in August.
Have, uh, just a, just a question, Kevin. Have, have any discussions been held with the school? Do they have any swim programs or anything that would assist them by using our pool? The new one I'm talking about, not the old. Uh, any discussions in that area?
No.
Okay.
No.
Do they have swim programs?
I don't think they currently have a swim program, no. It would be nice if we could get something like that, but it, it would have to be more than, you know, we might get open through Labor Day, but I don't know if that would help the swim programs. Normally a swim program, we, we need a indoor facility. Um, we have looked at, at doing, um, something similar to Cherokee County. They have a pool that's, it's a, it's a blow up shelter in the wintertime, and they take it down in the summertime. So it's actually outdoor and indoor. So, we, we've looked at those. We've looked at doing a steel structure over top of it. All of that costs money.
Sure.
You know, so.
Understand, I was just wondering if they were asking for any help, excuse me, in that area, so.
They, they've not asked. Cause usually I think in, um, uh, when schools getting ready to get out and when they also come back in, I think they, they go and take classes to the pool, but it's mostly for just recreation. It's not, it's not for a, a event, so.
I would just hate for us to get so far and then have to back up and start over again, so.
Yeah, I think it's, I know it would be big enough for, even though when we, the way the current design is, that, that design that was presented to you, uh, they still got the swim lanes.
Right.
But it's just on opposite end. So, and there, there are still, um, are, they're, they're no, they're no longer, I mean, they're, they're no shorter than what was currently there on this side. So, whether they would meet the criteria, you know, for.
You got four swim lanes.
Yeah.
So, I mean, what, what are you gonna do? Just have them sound down all day with four of them, you know?
Exactly, exactly.
Anyway, I was just wondering if we were thinking that or even looking at that, so.
Yep. So we wanna set up something for maybe middle of, of May for the advisory board to talk about the layout, and then we'll work from there.
I'm, um, I'm wondering, rather than us in here and them in there, if you're going to attend the meeting anyway, that you could just report back to us what, what the thinking is from that side.
Okay.
I mean, that's my suggestion, so.
That's fine too. I, I can go to the, I've been going to the advisory board meetings. Some, another commissioner could go to, probably. I'll have to check the number of people.
But then you've got your spacing issue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We could, we could have it in here and kind of spread out upstairs, so.
Okay.
Question? I was, Mr. Chairman, I was just gonna say that, uh, I think Mr. King already said this is the least expensive of those plans. And I like the way that it's drawn out. I like the way that we, um, still keep a deep end, and not as deep, but doesn't need to be as deep because we have the diving boards that have been moved years ago and so on. So it, it, and that looks really nice, the way that that beach entrance comes in from the shallow side, uh, anyway. So, uh, it, it seems to like that would be a, a, a good way to proceed with that. So input from anybody else would, or the advisory committee certainly is welcome. But it looks like a, looks like a, a good way to proceed with improving our pool. And helping our, and in that, improving, improving the helps, um, just the way it looks, but also the way it functions, so.
Anything else, questions?
The, the next budget item is, uh, animal control. Of course, we've, we've had discussions about adding the, um, the necessary personnel, adding a building. So I do have Grant Thorpe, he's with Cope Architecture, and we've been working with him on the high school project. He's gonna be drawing, cause what we can't really do is the design build scenario. But he is getting a, uh, structural engineer to draw up the plans for a steel building, similar to that one up there. And, um, possibly doing a partial owner build. So, they do the steel building outside, and then we kind of do all the stuff inside with our crew. And so that is a possibility. That would take that cost down to about two hundred and fifty thousand for the shell, and probably about another a hundred thousand for our crew to go in and, and do the interior work. So about, about three hundred and fifty thousand, uh, roughly, on the site that we currently have, which is at the corner of Industrial Park Road and Nineteenth.
And that would bring up the question for me, of how's the building sale going in town?
Yes, uh, so currently the, the sale of the old police station is at four hundred and twenty-six thousand, I think.
Really?
Yeah, four hundred and twenty-six thousand. And it's on the next ten day, um, outbid process. Four twenty-six, five hundred, sorry. So, and that'll be through the sixteenth of April. So somebody can, can bid, outbid through the sixteenth of April.
I never wanted to sell buildings, I'm changing my mind, so.
So.
Okay, go ahead, sorry.
So is any, anybody having a question about that process on the animal control one? Is that where you still want to proceed, right?
Yeah, and again, I will say that it's a law now, and we just have to do what we can to enforce it, so.
Which, part of that law also is unless we appropriate money for it, it does go to infect, right? So if we have to put this off, we can. Can we not?
That, that's correct, yes. As long as you don't appropriate money, I can't do the program, so.
And then as we go through what we're going to do right now, and this is why I wanted some of this budget process anyways, we need to prioritize some of these things, but, in fact, I noticed you've got a list.
Mm-hmm.
And I'd like for us all to be able to get that list too. How many more besides the animal controls on this list also?
Uh, well, we've talked about four, and I've got twelve on the list, so.
So there's a lot more still to talk about?
Yeah.
And then, but, we need to get this list also. This was part of what I wanted this meeting for, is for us to look at it. Then we could talk about these individual things and prioritize them the way we wanted to, to do them. And now that this stuff is going on right now, we might have to put some things off. It, because we're gonna be affected, are we not, by the, this as far as?
Well, well, this is kind of why we wanted to, we're gonna be working on an interim budget for three months. Um, cause we don't have a really good handle on the projection. You know, in two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, um, timeframe with the, with the Great Recession, uh, we had about a five percent decrease the first year and eight percent the next year in revenues coming from the sales tax. And so, I would probably quantify this event for this three month period, hopefully three month period, as being similar to that. So we're probably gonna see about an eight percent decrease in these three months. So, and it could be more. But based on, um, you know, still people are, are going through the drive-throughs, they're, they're buying gas, they're, um, they're not doing activities though. So, it's really hard to gauge. That's why, that's why I'm suggesting we need to hold off and to work on our interim. Uh, because this will affect next year's budget, whatever's happening here will affect next year based on when it ends, when, when this ends is make, make affect next year. So, that, that's the only reason I would be, um, I'm saying that. But yeah, definitely, we'll have time to go through all of these, and I'll, I'll provide you a list. And this is just a kind of open and, you know, we're talking about it. Um, it'll definitely, y'all will need to prioritize when we, when we get into it, whether we can get all of this in next year's budget or not. But at this point, um, we're, we're hopeful that we can include all of it. You know, based, based on the fact that we do have a healthy fund balance. Uh, we do have some of this is, is, um, you know, we can use definitely, uh, new money, like the building sale and that sort of thing for capital projects. The courthouse project is, is a big project. I don't know, you know, looking at it, um, it would probably be cost about two hundred thousand dollars a year in a payment. Um, it would, it's more, it's, it's wiser money spent than kind of doing what we were gonna do with it though. And that's why we, we kind of went that direction. So all of it can be put in, but that's up to y'all. What, what, what's in the budget is, is up to you as far as what you include and what you don't. So, but yeah, we can, I'll, I'll give you a list of everything I've got on, on this page, what we're gonna be talking about. And, and we can work through it line by line going forward.
Thank you.
But I'll proceed on with the architectural rendering of the facility where we can actually have a, a good, you know, set a plan and, and have a shovel-ready project when, when that happens, so. The next one is this building. Um, do have a, the H spec system here is working, um, so is the heat. But we're gonna have to do some, some repairs to all that. And when you do that, we may want to go a different direction, I think I mentioned this before, and doing a docking system, working at one, you know, one floor a year. Or if it's a project lends itself, do it all. So I've got, um, a contractor giving me an estimate on doing all this, the, the third floor and the second floor. And then, um, the first floor is kind of, it's halfway done already. Uh, that whole wing over there is on a separate system. So, uh, we'll possibly do some of that. Um, I'm estimating a half a million dollars, but that could be high. Uh, I just, I don't know, I don't, I don't have a good, good handle. This is a, um, an old building. It's gonna take a lot of, of reworking some of the stuff, so it could be a little bit more, could be a little bit less. Don't, don't know exactly. But when I get the estimates back, I'll, I'll share them with you, and then we can go from there. Any questions about this building with H spec?
That's the main thing we have to do, maintenance in this building? Is updating the heating and that?
Pretty much, yes. And, uh, so I'm going through a process with everything else going on. So, every two years, we have to report back to the federal government about how we've used this building, um, how we've changed it, uh, what, what we're doing, that sort of thing. So, it's a pretty long, in-depth process. So we're kind of in the middle of that right now, um, doing that. And, um, that's due, I think, June the first is when I have to edit that report to them. Um, so, right now, we've not done anything. You know, that would, that would go on the second floor and us on the third floor. But we've kind of, we, we backed up off of that because it was so much, there were so much things we had to put in downstairs to make that happen. So that's when we decided to, to go back and add the police department in, in the mix. Out at the spec building, uh, which is currently Beasley flooring. So, a couple big ticket items. One is a new roof. The current bid is two hundred and thirty thousand. We're trying to get cheaper bid for the new roof. And then also, they're asking for an additional, uh, or help with an additional space. And, um, and they need about fifteen thousand square feet. So we're, we're still working with them on that part of it. Definitely the roof though, if not this current, this next fiscal year, the one right after that. So, uh, my hope is maybe we could look at doing a big inclusive, um, loan with USDA. Uh, cause we do have, um, I've mentioned, we do have a consultant now, Dana Hall, who is a consultant, um, a private consultant that works with USDA. And, um, they are very successful with, with, with grants and with, um, loans for them. So, hopefully we can work out something through that to kind of make it all-inclusive, um, with the courthouse and possibly the, uh, economic development process to maybe even through the Economic Development Agency or administration with the federal government. So, we'll see what we can do as far as minimizing the cost of a new expansion building or even possibly even the roof for that building, so. We, we've opened up dialogue with them about that process, and they've sent it on up to the corporate ladder. So, there is, there is, um, they do, would like to buy it, I think, but, uh, it, it just, at, at the local level. But I don't know what their main process is at, at there for. So, we're still in, in conversation with them about it. The next one I just put down here, cause I, you know, it's, it's kind of one of those projects that's hanging out there. We do have a study done on the Eila Sewer Project. And looking at the things that are being and done in that area, I think that there're gonna be, um, possibly a Dollar General store up in the Eila area. So, uh, right next to East Elementary School. And, uh, also, of course, the tribe owns the, uh, Eila campground now. So just trying to minimize some of that impact of sewer going into the river. Uh, we may want to look at doing that project along with getting our, our sites available up at the event park to, uh, have sewer capacity where we can have more events and things like that, so. Didn't know what your thought process was on that. USDA is the, the primary funder for any infrastructure project, and they do have grant monies available also. But we do need to get an application going, if, if that's what, what we want, just want to do. That'll also depend on, you know, how many people can tie in. What we'd do is create our own sewer authority. Because the way it works, in order to do qualification for, like, especially grants, big, bigger grants, you need to create an authority. So an authority is basically this board to say that we're gonna create the Eila Sewer District. And when that happens, it's almost like it's, it is creating a new, a whole new company. It's not even a part of Swain County, it's, 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 it's the sewer district, period. And so you're still the board member of that new sewer district. So then, you can basically show you have no assets and you have no liabilities, right? So, you're more qualified for loans and grants if you have nothing. And you're starting out a public system. So, that's really how, what we need to do, what, what needs to happen to get going with this pro, process. So, that's what I'll be suggesting to you, if you wanna, if you wanna do it, that, that would be the way to do it. Uh, we've done this a couple of times in my, my career. We did the Franklin Grove Sewer Project, uh, we did the Governor's Island Sewer Project. Both, basically, we did this exact same thing. We created our own entity, both Franklin Grove and Governor's Island. And then once the project was completed, we would sign them off to the town. This one is gonna be different, because we're not gonna be signing off on to anybody. We're gonna be actually buying capacity from the Whittier Shantary District for the sewer. But we're gonna be creating our own enterprise fund. And probably collecting sewer tap fees and, and everything that a sewer company would be doing. So it's, it's a little bit different process than we've ever done before. A lot of counties are in the sewer and water business. And at some point, we're gonna probably have to be there. And this is maybe a good one to get our feet wet on, per se, so.
How does this tie in with all of the others that you're looking to the USDA for funding? Can, can they be wrapped all together and, and presented as a one, either one request? Or would it have to be broken out into various areas?
This is a whole different company, so it would be created separately. It wouldn't even have Swain County's books on it or anything. So we can ask, Swain County can ask for money, but also the sewer district can ask for money as well. And it wouldn't be competing against each other.
Would we be able to, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
But we've already made this Ela Sewer District, correct?
No.
We've talked about it. I don't think we did.
Thought we voted on us being the board for the Ela Sewer.
We've talked about it, but we didn't really get it clear if we're gonna do that or not. Just making sure we're still on board with it where I can get all the paperwork ready to go.
So we haven't?
Not officially, no. I just need to make sure that you're still on board with that process. Do you want, do you want me to bring it back to a regular meeting and, and go ahead and get some?
I think so.
Paperwork ready?
I think so. I give people, again, puts it back in the forefront of our minds.
Okay.
My question, if we set up this, group, board, water board, whatever, we're obviously going to need personnel to deal with everything.
Correct.
My question is, can we depend on or can we count on or can we say that your office will help us find those individuals and train those individuals, put those individuals into place as we need them?
Yes, yeah. And at, at this point, we just, we don't know how big it, it would get. So we can use county staff through an agreement type of scenario. So we, we can handle all the logistics that way, uh, in the interim. Uh, normally when you put in a sewer system, the biggest thing is, you know, the lift station. There'll be one lift station that, you know, has to be maintained. You know, making sure the generator is operational and all that good stuff. So, uh, that, that's gonna be the biggest expense to it. The rest of it, normally unless somebody breaks your lawn, this stuff is good for, for quite a while. You know, even I, I think, I don't even think they've had problems on, on Franklin Grove and that project's been done at least 15 years that we, we did. So for, for the interim.
So would the, could, could this board contract with the county if you had any maintenance issues?
Correct.
So we don't really need staff at that particular point? We would just contract, contract that out?
Yeah. Now, at some point in the future, if it got big enough and, you know, if y'all wanted, if you wanted to go into like a water system, stuff like that, that, that's when you really get into the needing a staff of three or four people, at least.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I, I, if my memory serves me right, we were all on board with this in past discussions. We, um, looked at it as way to, to develop that area, uh, down there and to help everybody's needs in that area. So, uh, I'm in favor of him continuing or going down this path. I don't, I don't know how much more we need to, um, do with it. Uh, we, we've talked about it in the past quite a bit and, and I thought we were all on board. Is there a change of heart or change of attitude or?
Uh, I don't, I don't think so. As Kevin said, he just brought it back up to put it back in the forefront of our minds. Uh, if you wanted, if this board wanted to go ahead and make that an official act, we can do that. And there's no reason we can't do that today. So if you wanted to do that, um, we can.
I thought we were gonna do action things at action meetings.
I think everything kind of got turned on its head for a while, so that's why we're trying to make some normalcy out of all of this.
I'll, I'll, I'll bring some documents. I'll, I'll get the documents ready for the actual creating.
Thursday, do we know?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
So I just wanted to make sure everybody's don't, still, still on the same page because we, it has been a while since we talked about it, so.
And there has been changes too, because before, Ela Campground was one of the things where we said, hey, they need you. You came and said, hey, they're having big issues, but now that's not Ela Campground. It's been sold to the tribe.
Correct.
They on that, and there's other things we, we need to look at it again.
So there may be other partnerships we can develop, is what I was saying. It's, so it, there has, definitely has changed. But the first thing, we'll just get the paperwork ready for the authority, go ahead and create that. And then we'll start, start dialogue.
And when you talk about the Whittier District, didn't you say that a while ago? But we, it's not there anymore, is it? It's Twos, right?
It's still in limbo. Now, the Whittier Shantire District will always remain because they will always keep the water. All Twos has taken is the sewer. So they'll be both of them there. But, um, I don't know if that has actually taken place or not, the actual transfer. I know it was supposed to transfer in, in January, but it seemed like there were some hiccups. So I'm not for sure. And then I've, we've lost kind of, um, Dan Harbaugh, uh, with the Twos retired. So we've had some, you know, just, just delay and, and probably some of the staffing up there too. So we'll just have to reach back out. We do know, I do know we, we bought capacity from them. So we're ready to go as far as that, that part, so.
And we did, we paid a fee and stuff for so much capacity.
Yep, yep, so. But we'll, we'll get this all going. I just wanted to bring it back up and make sure everybody's still on the same page, so. Those are two easy ones first. EMS. So we are looking at, um, possibly doing two remounts. And a remount is basically taking an old, an old box and putting it on a new chassis. So we're looking at doing two remounts or maybe one remount and one new truck, uh, for this next year. And we'll try to factor that in, kind of like we did before. You know, we're, we did, we, we've got to keep good equipment out there for folks. And, uh, unfortunately, this is gonna be about every other year thing is we'll be buying ambulances, so. And their range in a remount is about $90,000. And a new one is between 150 and 200,000. So we're gonna try to do two remounts. This was another thing that I think, uh, some, somebody, I think maybe Kenneth asked me about, was the baler out at sanitation. So a new baler is about 93,000 dollars. And we had talked about, um, they, they do need one. I mean, 100%. They need, they need one if you wanna keep that going, but they, their cardboard has decreased. We got that particular baler, we bought it from, uh, Jackson County. And I think we only paid like 15,000 dollars for it plus moving it. And at, at the time, we, we bought it when it was like 25 years old. So it, it, it's old. It, it's probably at least 40 years old now. So it does need to be replaced. They are 100,000 dollars, so the return on investment, it's gonna take you years and years and years to pick up 98,000 dollars in, in that enterprise. So if you took out, you know, all the labor involved and everything, you're probably looking at least a 15-year return on investment once you buy it. But you're gonna, after that, you're gonna, you know, you, it's, it's gonna work. So if we can afford it, I think it would be, uh, good to go ahead and get it, so. And this would be maybe a, a good example of, of what you would wanna use some of the interest money for. You know, last year or a couple of years ago, we used some of it to buy ambulances with. So we may want to look at that this coming year, um, as well, so. Just something to, something to throw out there and think about.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Good question. We used interest money last time on the last ambulances, didn't we?
On the what now?
The last ambulances. We, didn't we just do two?
We did, we did one remount and one brand new one.
Alright, so we used the interest money. How much interest hit might we take on the interest money?
Your guess is as good as mine.
We might take a hit though with it also, with wheels.
There's a possibility, of course, it's, it's probably good that we didn't have, uh, anything in the, uh, bond market or the equity market. We're still tied to the T bill rate and the T bill rate is still standing the same. So that's gonna decrease, but not exponentially because, you know, the Fed dropped it to what? Like almost zero as far as the, the prom, I think several days ago. I don't, I think you're not gonna see that. That, that's more for the short-term T bill rate. We're, we're more in the long-term T bill rate market. So I don't know if you, how, I really, I'm not a financial analyst, but I can't, uh, but I would suspect that it's gonna remain pretty much what it is around, around 1.2%. That's what we, that's what we're getting currently, so.
Thank you.
So we'll, we'll just see how, how this flows within the budget. I mean, is, is the baler, do you still wanna keep the baler in at this point? We'll try to write a, we'll try to write some grants to.
Balers are dangerous.
Do what?
Balers are dangerous. About it.
It's, yeah. It's, uh, it's old and, uh, basically it's just a big ram. And it squashes all that stuff together and they tie, tie wire around it. But, but it, it does need to be upgraded, 100%.
Now, the baler that is out there, if I recall correctly, the statement had been made that we may not need one, we do not, may not need as larger one to replace the one that's out there.
And I was just going by historical, so a long time ago, before we had that baler, they just used the smaller ones. We had, we had a couple of those smaller ones that they've got in the building. And, uh, it was more, it was less automated. So it took more personnel to do the same thing they can do with the big one. Right now, you've got the town trucks, they just pull up, they throw it on a conveyor, a hopper, and it goes into the thing and it's done. And now, you know, that, that would definitely change. And so could it justify probably a half position? Yeah, it probably could. If you, if you had to switch back to the way you did it before, you, you know, probably one, at least a half FTE, if not one FTE, uh, that would have to be used, I guess, so.
Well, but it appears to me that we need, we need to do the job and we need to do it completely. We can't cut back on the job, so, you know. The baler, we would depend on you and probably Scotty to tell us what you really need out there, not what is desirable. And we've gotta include the budget in our thought processes, but, um, we need to know what you need.
Okay. I'm gonna say we probably, we need it. That's, that'd be my, my opinion. And I, I know Scotty will ask, say the same thing, so. I think, I think for the safety and for the, uh, efficiency.
Right, right.
For both those, we, we, we definitely need it, so. The other one is, it's the library building, the current library building that I've got on here. And, um, we're gonna definitely need to do a new roof and possibly an HVAC system. The roof definitely this year. The HVAC system, we might get limp along one more year. But at some point, we're gonna have to start replacing this stuff, so.
Okay, I'm sorry, new roof and what?
HVAC system.
Oh, the HVAC, yeah.
Yeah, so. And then a few of us who were over there, I, I guess when the governor came along and at least that one room where, where we met definitely needs to be updated. It was kind of embarrassing, I guess, that I, was that, was that the word you'd use? We did have some ceiling tiles down and, and it was just, it's just not been, it's not been fixed in, in several years. And, uh, so I would like to kind of at least freshen up that room. If not, we'd, we'd talked about and, and we met with the, the library folks about the, uh, possibility of expanding in the back where Fontana Regional is. And, you know, y'all heard what the Fontana Regional lady said, that there's, there's room back there. But there is 2,500 square feet somebody's using in the back because it's a 10,000 square foot building. And, and the current library is at 7,500 square feet. So there's some room back there to do something with. And if y'all want to include that in this year's budget, to let our crew go over there and freshen it up, that's fine. I, I just, I, I was needing to know a direction before I started quoting out like the roof and, and the HVAC and any interior work, what, what kind of the, the pleasure the board is at this point.
Now, you're, the room you're talking about is the present meeting room by the bathrooms, that one in the back?
Yep. So we, we can go in there and just, you know, kind of just freshen it up with, um, you know, drywall and it, I think it's got paneling on it now, I believe. It's painted paneling, so. And then also looking at, maybe some utilize some of the space in the back. And we'll work through Fontana Regional to do some of that as well. See what we can identify as, as added space.
Who can, who can give you the true footage? You said about 2,500, but who can give you the true footage to see how that could be even suggested, uh, a movement that would?
We just need to ta, I'll, I'll take our crew over and talk to JF and we'll go through it and we'll measure it.
Okay, okay.
That's really all I have. The last one was, I've, I've not got any clarification on this. And it's talking about the revaluation process. If this pandemic continues, uh, will the Department of Revenue give us authority to delay? Uh, at this point, no. So we still have to go on for, for January 1st, 2021. I do see them, if it continues on up into the fall, them probably giving us a delay of a year. But at this point, I don't know. That was just, I had it on here just to, to kind of preface that, but.
Update on that?
Do what?
Just to update?
Just, just to update. Uh, you know, we are looking into it. We've called them a couple of times just to see what, what they're thinking at this point. And they're not made a determination yet if, if they would allow us to, to delay or even if this board would want to delay. We may want to just continue going, um, which is fine too.
Sorry, do we need to delay? I mean, is there something we need to?
Well, it stopped any face-to-face contact with folks out in the public. So there is some, we're, we are behind a little bit on, on, you know, picking up stuff right now for, for the reval, so. We're just concerned as it goes, it goes forward, we're gonna have to have, you know, we're gonna be delaying going out in the field a lot, so.
So you would have to back up and pick that up somewhere along the way?
We're, we're just concerned about it.
Right, but just what is the face-to-face, what is the purpose of the face-to-face that makes it so necessary to do?
Well, it's just getting on one of people's property. Usually people come out and they talk to you. So it's kind of like a bill inspector going out.
I see what you're saying, okay.
So that's where we're at right now, is people's going out right now?
Oh, yeah.
On the properties and doing their evaluation, checkup things.
We're doing a lot of it by pictometry, which we invested in. And we have a thing called, um, it's basically a sketching program. It automatically sketches any new buildings. And so it'll automatically flag it that, oh, somebody's built a shed or somebody's building a legal structure, whatever, it automatically tells us. So we don't have to go out to the field anymore. But, but there, there is, there's times we have to go out and, and measure and list, so. But but there there is those times we have to go out and and measure and list, so. And that may not happen, I'm just, I'm, you know. That that we're concerned about it a little bit and that we're in dialogue with the Department of Revenue. There's a third of the counties, I think a third, yeah. No, an eighth of the counties are doing revaluations this year. So they they stagger them, we're only, it's every eight year, so they stagger all one hundred counties a certain amount every every year. I think we're around fifteen fifteen counties this year, so. That's all I've got unless y'all have other items. Those are the main things that we've talked about and what we're we're going to discuss on the twenty-third of this of March, so.
Any any questions?
It's a big, it's a big list. I just the numbers that you gave, that's like one point six million dollars. It's just like, it's numbers. Some of them would have numbers.
It is.
Yeah, pocket change for.
And we'll be taking, you know, the the price of the building. We can, we can reallocate those funds for that to the different projects, so to, so. Does that include it, I guess, the animal control facility?
Yeah, I have a number.
Yeah.
At this, at this point, do we have permission to go with our budget through October? Or where do we get that?
We'll just, what I'll do is I'll provide you a document. It'll just basically be identical to this year's and you just approve.
Okay, okay.
And so we'll do one twelfth of this year's budget for three months. So it'll be three, one whole quarter of this year's budget will be allocated on an interim basis. So no, no salary increases, nothing extra at all. And so if you do a salary increase, say if you if you want to do one in October, you can either start it on October first or you can retrofit back to July first, either one you want to do. That's normally how it's happened.
Okay, but I know that we're required to have our budget in by?
June thirtieth.
So what we adopt will just replace that or is that, and that's acceptable to the state?
As long as it's balanced, they don't, they don't care.
Will it be balanced when we adopt it? But beyond that, or?
Exactly.
Okay. So is that it till Thursday?
That's it. And on Thursday, it's just basically kind of trying to get back into a regular meeting schedule. So I don't have really anything, you know, anything to vote on. It'll be mostly just administrative reports, but at least you can try to get back to a little bit of a normalcy with with the meeting.
Anything else? Any, do you have anything, Roger?
Yes.
Do you have any?
No, I just want, would like to get that list.
I'll I'll make you one, I'll get a copy for you.
If you remember it, what you think was
Oh, okay.
the most important to get done first, that's what.
All of them are important, but I understand, I'll I'll try to.
So you have what you think and and talk to everybody else also.
Yeah, anything else?
I guess I have one other thing. So with the buildings being closed last day on the seventeenth, would y'all like to have maybe a meeting, one last update meeting before that time period on the sixteenth, which is a Thursday, the sixteenth?
Will we know anything new? Question number one.
Don't know, that that's a, that's about a week and a week and two days away, so I don't, I don't know, possibly. I mean, there may be other stuff out there that you want to hear from the committee on. We were going to meet on the fifteenth, again, the whole committee and and go over stuff again. There won't be anything new because there's nothing to add, you know, anything else to add, so.
Okay, but I think that if we have some some reports, I like the hospital report today. But if we have some idea of what's going on and what's happening, are they seeing an increase or they seeing a steady, what what's happening?
Right.
So I would think that a meeting on the seventeenth would probably be a good idea.
Okay, so you want it Friday or Thursday? Thursday.
Gentlemen?
The sixteenth, I think, is what, was that Thursday was the sixteen?
Thursday, the sixteen.
You're meeting on the fifteenth with the committee and then the sixteenth. I I would prefer the sixteenth probably than a Thursday.
Okay, you want to do it at nine o'clock on Thursday morning?
I don't want to, but yes, I guess we can.
Okay. Or we can do ten, it doesn't matter.
No, no, no.
Just whatever.
Okay, next meeting Thursday, nine o'clock.
Okay, April sixteenth.
Anything else?
That's it.
Anyone, anyone? If there is nothing else, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
My motion will adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion in the second on the floor to adjourn. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That's passed unanimously and we stand adjourned.